All this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, March 30th work session. And I am Mayor Beverly Burks and we will have roll call. Beverly Burks, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I'm President.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hassan.
Present.
Councilman Carol. Councilman Carol. You can hear him. Councilwoman Hopkins.
Present.
And Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Johnson. I think. I see her, but, okay. So we have, we have quorum. So we'll proceed the work session in terms of resident comment policy. Any member of the public may address questions or comments to the council referencing only agenda items after the mayor and council have had the opportunity to discuss the agenda item. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments. We will now move into presentations, administrative business and new business. And our new business is the swearing in of Councilman-elect Mark Perkins. City Manager.
Good evening, this is Robin Gomez, Clarkson City Manager, and we do have the honor, pleasure and privilege to introduce and have our newest elected council member, Mr. Mark Perkins, to officially take his oath. And I think Councilman Perkins is on the call. We have our city municipal judge, Judge David Will as well, welcome Judge, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Perkins as well for everything that you have done, everything you are about to do. It is not easy for folks to want to run for elected office and then serve in that role, so we greatly want to thank you, congratulate you, and I will turn it over to Judge Will, I think will administer the oath. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, and good evening, Mr. Perkins. Congratulations on your election, are you under, are you prepared now to take the oath of office?
I am.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please, sir. I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the state of Georgia.
And of the state of Georgia.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Clarkston.
Of the city of Clarkson.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of councilperson.
Of the office of councilperson.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further swear and affirm to the following.
I further swear and affirm to the following.
I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Of any unaccounted-for public money.
Due to the state of Georgia.
Due to the state of Georgia.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
Or any political subdivision or authority thereof.
I am not the holder.
I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust under the government of the United States.
Of any office or trust of any government of the United States.
Any other state.
Or any other states.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited by the laws of the state of Georgia from holding.
Which I am prohibited by the laws of the state of Georgia from holding.
I am qualified to hold the office.
I am qualifying to hold the office.
Of councilperson of the city of Clarkston.
Of councilperson of the city of Clarkston.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
According to the Constitution and laws of Georgia.
Congratulations, Mr. Councilman, and look forward to serving with you.
Thank you, Judge.
I am going to email to Ms. Ashby this oath, which I have signed, and if you'll sign it for the record, that'll be the original.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Great, great, congratulations. And Councilman Perkins, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, I can, I can be very brief, because I think we have an agenda, so I won't keep this too long, but, no, I just want to say thank you to everyone who got out and voted. It was a cold and rainy day after several weeks of sunshine, so thank you for exercising your voice. And I appreciate all the staff, the city of Clarkson, those that administer the elections as well, just for their service to our community, so I look forward to working with you, Madam Mayor, and the rest of the council in the coming months.
We're very excited to have you.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, at this time, I'm going to step off the call and go ahead and email this to Ms. Ashby.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
And next, we will have Item C2, which is presentation by Catherine Tipton regarding cat colonies in Clarkston. And is Ms. Tipton on the line?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you so much, thank you for having me. I thought I'd just sort of give you all an overview of, of community cats, as we call them, and then be more specific about, about community cat colonies in Clarkston, if that's okay with everyone, and also take, take questions if you have them. So, community cats is the term that's given to feral, stray and abandoned cats that inhabit most neighborhoods, not only in and around Atlanta, but also in all cities, towns, rural areas across the US. And these cats, at some point in their lives, or at some point in the lives of one of their cat forbears, these cats were left to fend for themselves by humans, who should have been taking care of them. And what happened is that the cats formed groups, which are now called colonies, and they set about surviving on their own. Some cat facts is that cats reach sexual, sexual maturity at about five months and can have up to five litters of kittens each year in what we call kitten season, which by the way is starting now. For example, if one cat has four kittens, two male and two female, and if those four kittens paired off and had four kittens of their own, eight months later, they will have produced 12 kittens. And if this coupling continues, 16 months later, those kittens could be 36 kittens, that just gives you sort of an idea of how quickly cats seem to multiply, so if you combine that idea with multiple cats in a neighborhood, and the multiple times that cats can produce litters in any given year, you see that their cat colonies and community cats can be a real problem. Another interesting fact is that cats do not go through menopause, so a female cat can actually have kittens up until the day she dies. Now, for years, humans attempted to manage cat, community cat populations by the inhumane catch-and-kill method, which was not only ineffective, but put a huge burden on shelters across the country. Today, we know that the only successful management of community cats and cat colonies is TNR, and that stands for trap, neuter and return. What happens is that roaming cats are live-trapped, that's the T part, taken to a vet clinic to be neutered if the cat is male, or spayed if the cat is female, that's the N part. And while under sedation, the cat's left ear is tipped, the little, the little triangle at the top is removed. And that shows that other cat trappers, that that is a fixed community cat, that's the sign, the ear tip. Then the cat will be returned, that's the R part, to the exact location from which it was trapped, and the return is important, they cannot be just released, they have to be returned to the exact location. Because cats will try to get back to their colony. The relocation, as a matter of fact, of cats without a containment period and a proper caretaker is considered in DeKalb County animal cruelty. So future trappers can identify already spayed and neutered cats by their distinctive ear tip. And in DeKalb County, community cats are protected under Section 5 of the DeKalb County ordinances. Prior to TNR programs, an estimated 25,000 feral cats each year ended up in Atlanta shelters, where the only option was euthanasia. The taxpayer cost in Atlanta to trap and euthanize these cats was about 3.5 million annually. But in 2002, Lifeline launched Catlanta, which was the first and largest organized TNR program in Atlanta. And to date, over 50,000 cats in over 35 counties have been TNR'd through Lifeline's continuing program. And in DeKalb County alone, in the month of February, 83 total cats were TNR'd through DeKalb Animal Services. 30 of the cats were returned through the shelter, and this is called SNR, that's Shelter Neuter Return. And 53 of those cats were returned through volunteers, and that's TNR. A stable cat colony has benefits for both humans and cats. The colony should always have a caretaker and a feeder, so the cats have a regular source of food, water and shelter. And in return, the cats take care of any pesky rodents. They won't fight or give birth to countless litters of kittens, and they will prevent other cats from settling in, they're very territorial. And if a cat or two is able to join the existing colony, the newcomer should be TNR'd very quickly to keep the colony stable, this is what we call it, as I, as you can tell, a stable colony. And I think the important thing to note here is that, is that trappers are really ordinary citizens, there is not like a government-sponsored, sorry, that's one of my TNR kitties that ended up at home, this is Neffra Kitty. And she has her ear tip, I don't know if you can see it, whoops, she's a little squirmy, she's sitting on my desk with me. Trappers are, are ordinary citizens, that they volunteer their time, their energy and their money, because it costs to get these cats spayed and neutered, it's low cost at Lifeline, but it's still a cost. And they do this because they're concerned for the safety and the welfare of community cats. Clarkston's part of DeKalb County, and so trappers and caretakers can utilize Lifeline's resources and the low-cost spay, feral and neuter and spay program. And something I think that you all should know, that Clarkston does have its own Facebook group called Clarkston Cats as a specific resource for people who are interested in, in working with or trapping cats. For me, the Facebook groups, there are several of them, Lifeline runs one, and in my particular neighborhood of Kirkwood, we have Kirk Cats, which really is, is much larger than the neighborhood itself, where people can get information and post about problems or, or cat sightings and that sort of thing. I think what might be important to you all is, is some things that I thought of, that you all could help the community cats in your area. And that's really by actively promoting and supporting the TNR program and existing cat colonies and their caretakers in Clarkston, by educating citizens and businesses on the importance of humanely maintaining colonies. One of the troubles that trappers find and caretakers find is lots of places don't like the cats. They think they can, you know, the cats will leave if they don't feed them. They think they can have pest control people come and get them and take them and kill them, that is not the case, they, that's not allowed in DeKalb County. So it's important, first and foremost, for people in a community to understand exactly what community cats are, what the colonies are, and, and the fact that they are protected, and they're being looked after, a lot of them, by ordinary citizens. So Clarkston could off, also offer workshops to teach citizens that are interested how to trap and how to care for and maintain colonies. Another resource that you all could provide, if you wanted to, would be actually buying traps for trappers to borrow and use. Lifeline has traps, they charge a small deposit, and people trap the cats and bring them back and get the deposit back. You could also sit up, set up a spay-neuter fund for trappers to, to defray the spay-neuter costs, or set up a food bank or funds for food and other resources for colony caretakers, I mean, these are just some ideas that I was thinking of to tell you all specifically about, about helping people working with the colony cats. I have all kinds of information that I'd be happy to send you, such as myths about colony cats, that they, you know, will go away if you don't feed them, that's not true, that they destroy birds, that's not true, humans destroy more birds than cats do. You know, interesting things that, that you might want to know about the community cats. Because really, what people are discovering now is that it's best and better for all concerned to work with, rather than against the community cat colonies. Since I've been trapping and helping people with some colonies in Clarkston, one of the things that I've found is that most of the Clarkston folks really do are really very kind to the cats, I've met lots of people that feed the cats, but had no idea about, about spay-neuter, trap-neuter return. So education, I think, is, is key here. I don't know if, if you all have any questions that you'd like to ask, or, or anything else about, or if you'd like for me to send you some more information on this, I'd be glad to, to do that.
Ms. Tipton, thank you very much for the information. And it would be great if you provided this in an email, so then we can make sure we can distribute it to the community.
Okay, what would you like, just facts about cats and myths about cats, a municipal guidebook for you all?
Everything, pretty much what you mentioned today would be great, if you have some type of flyer or something that we could also use, that would be great as well. I think it is very poignant to have this discussion, considering this is Pet Month.
Yes.
And so, so it works out perfectly to have you talk about it, so thank you again, and I know Councilman Carol wanted to make sure that you were on the agenda, and so I'll turn to the council to see if they have any questions.
Okay.
This is Councilman Carol, I just want to thank you for that presentation, it's very informative, I definitely learned a lot of things I didn't know about cat colonies. Hopefully, we can use that, because I know we do have a lot of cat colonies in Clarkston.
Yes.
People are concerned about, so I appreciate your time presenting.
Well, I, please reach out to me, I, I'd be glad to hold, to teach people how to do, how to trap. You know, that's what we do at, at Kirk Cats in, in the Kirkwood area, we've gone around teaching people how to do this. It's best to get the neighborhood, the neighbors involved in helping the cats in their area, that's very, that's very important, and it certainly, you know, if you're an animal lover, it certainly helps the cats, because they have, they mostly like to stay under the radar, they have a rough life. And they need the food, shelter and water, and in return, they'll, they'll be better citizens than if they're not spayed, neutered and being taken care of by, by human caretakers.
Ms. Tipton, I also want to echo similar sentiments, I want to say thank you so much as an animal lover, particularly as a cat lover, I really do want to say thank you again.
Oh, good for you, thank you. I appreciate you for letting me come here.
I, I'd like to thank you as well, I am having, it's very poignant for me this week, I'm having my cat adventures that were born in the crawl space under my house, about to set up their own little cat colony, and they were small enough that I could bring them in and bottle-fed them. But now I have, by the way, guys, my address has changed, I'm now officially living on Rogers Street, still in Clarkston, but these cats have never been inside another building than the one that they were born in, and so now we have these three, and my mother's dog who chases cats. We have Wild Kingdom going on in this house. That's why I keep musing my microphone, because you don't know what's going on out there, but I'm trying to keep it from getting out of control here.
Oh, good for you, thank you so much, and you know, you can go on the Facebook page, the community Facebook page for Lifeline and the Kirk Cat Facebook page, and also the Clarkston Cat Facebook page, to get tips and hints and how to relocate and, you know, just post stuff and people go, well, hey, I know, I, I've been there, I can help you do that, so that would be fabulous, and I'll, would you like for me to just?
Well, I've had them five years now, so they're settled in.
So they're well-established.
Yeah, yeah, they are definitely indoor cats now, they are no longer community cats, we stopped that right there.
Good for you. Yeah, I have one in the council.
Okay, hearing none, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone, or do we have anyone that had, the community had questions?
No, Mayor.
Thank you again, and we will definitely follow up with you to get additional information, so that we can make sure our community stays informed of what they can do with our cats. So thank you.
I did want to make a comment, is that possible?
Mr. Moore, you can make a comment.
Thank you. Can you clarify for me, the, the cat community, or the, the cat colony and people's pets that get fed by other people that get disoriented and end up being homeless cats? I've, I've caught and released several cats through Lifeline and contributed every year to Lifeline as well, I think it's a great program. But I think there's a lot of people that see a cat walking by, and they think the first thing is that the cat needs food, and then the cat doesn't go back home, and so they've, they've either been rehomed or they've been disoriented and become homeless. Can you speak on that subject a little bit, and try to clarify for people that it's a bad idea to feed cats that just happen to be walking by your house? And that the cat colonies are actually set-up colonies that are fed by people that feed them on a regular basis?
Well, some colonies are. Lots of cats are in colonies that are not, in fact, being taken care of by a human being, and that's part of the problem. And I think most people today, if they have animals that are pets, cats that are pets, usually keep them inside, however, you are correct, there are some cats that are inside-outside cats. So I would say to see if the cat walking by is, continues to do that, and does not appear to have, to have, does not appear to be owned. But the other component to that is that some cats that are walking by are not owned, but are in fact, community cats, and just go from house to house to house. So I always, I mean, I have food out, I always, you know, I animals, cats have a tough life, I, it's not going to help them particularly to not be fed, and they know their own territory, so unless they are taken away from their territory and dumped, as we call it, by a human being, or sometimes their human leaves and abandons the cats, this happens more often than, you know, you would care to think. They don't necessarily get disoriented, they can become lost, however, and that's when you want to put up flyers and look at the sho, look in the shelter, it's, I mean, it is a problem, and you just don't know, it's very hard to tell if the cat is in fact, a community cat or an owned cat.
Yeah, I've answered your question. I've had several problems with different cats that, that I've had, that go to other houses, they end up being rehomed, they don't come back home, they don't show up for dinner, things like that.
Yeah.
And, and they get really fat, too, because the other people are overfeeding them. So I, I think that it's a mistake to encourage people just to feed animals by putting food out, for other reasons as well, it becomes a feeding den for coyotes, too. The, the issue of, of feeding cats that aren't yours, unless you're involved in a colony support system, I think you're in the community by, by rehoming cats. So I, I was hoping you would, you would speak more encouragingly about getting involved in the programs for the colonies and not just put food out, as you say, you do yourself.
Well, I, I also have, there are several, there, we have a neighborhood cat that we feed, that I know that I'm the main feeder for it. It's, the, the trouble is, the colonies are, this is what I'm saying, it's mostly sort of a some colonies are stable and established with caretakers, but many are not, and it's very hard to tell if a cat is in a colony, or if it's just lost, or if it's abandoned, or in fact, if it's owned by someone, but you're right, I mean, people, people tend to get either way too zealous or, or totally neglectful, I mean, it's hard to find that, that middle line.
Well, I've gone so far, I've gone so far as to put collars on the cats.
Mr. Moore.
With labels.
Mr. Moore.
Labels that say, do not feed me, call this number, and they don't honor that.
Thank you, what we'll do is, Ms. Tipton has provided us such great information and the questions that you brought up, can you add that to something that we should take into consideration in terms of education? Ms. Tipton?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll make sure in terms of the issues that Mr. Moore brought up, and some of the other issues or questions that came up, we'll include that in the information you send back to the city, is that fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If there aren't any other questions, we then will proceed with the next agenda item, and unless, Ms. Tipton, you want to stay, you are free to go.
Well, I think I will skedaddle along, and would you like me, Mayor, to send you the information just to you, or shall I reply to, shall I send all?
Reply to all, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you again. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, and we will now proceed with new business, Section E, Item E1, which is request to amend Section 3-58 New Licenses permitted for Certain Designated Businesses to Define and Permit a Retail Delivery Shop To Sell and Deliver Packaged Beer, Malt Beverages and/or Wine As a Qualified Business in the City of Clark, Clarkston. Ms. Calwee, would you please address this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this request is the mayor and city council shall discuss a request from GoPuff to amend Section 3-58 New Licenses permitted for Certain Designated Businesses To Allow the Business to Sell and Deliver Packaged Beer, Malt and/or Wine in the City of Clarkston. According to the applicant, the purpose of this request is to create an option for retail businesses who do not allow walk-in sales to receive a license for the retail sale of packaged for the package of beer, malt beverages and/or wine. With the General Assembly passing House Bill 879 in 2020, allowing the home delivery of beer, wine and liquor, GoPuff, Clarkston, is requesting the amendment to venture into the delivery of the services of beer and wine. Section 3-58, New Licenses permitted for Certain Designations, for Certain Designated Businesses. The listed businesses currently are a brower shop, a specialty wine shop, and a grocery store. GoPuff is asking to amend, to add, or a retail delivery shop and a Section E retail delivery shop means a retail establishment which is engaged in the retail sale of food products, household goods and other sundry items for delivery only that has a total interior floor area of no more than 10,000 square feet. Ms. Cameron Kilburg, Council for GoPuff is attending the meeting tonight to answer any additional questions that you may have, Mayor and Council. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Calwee, and with the council, what was, what, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Kilburg, Cameron Kilburg.
Okay, hello, Ms. Kilburg, would you like to address the council?
Yes, please, thank you all for having me here tonight. Just a little reminder who GoPuff is, we've been operating there for just under a year now in Clarkston, we are a completely online convenience store. We deliver everything from baby diapers, snack items, dog food products directly to your door within about a 30-minute timeframe. We would like to be adding beer- Um, we would like to be adding beer and wine to that list. Um, to be clear, we will not be getting spirits licenses at this time in the state of, uh, Georgia. We are delivering beer and wine, um, throughout other locations in, uh, Georgia at this time. We're in the process of getting our licenses at the state level. Um, that includes two of our, uh, Atlanta locations. And so we were hoping to be able to do that in Clarkston, um, again, thinking that with the fact that we do not do any walk-in sales, that it would be a different type of business model, um, that would meet what we believe was probably the intent of the original moratorium on further licenses. But I'm happy to answer any further questions, uh, about this. Also, I will mention the ten thousand square foot size is to ensure we're not, you're not opening it up to someone creates a mass warehouse and your jurisdiction is trying to, uh, deliver directly out of that warehouse. So we think it shows it's kind of a small shop, smaller than the grocery stores, not a ware, like a massive warehouse.
I will open it up to questions for council. And please recognize, so I see Councilman, uh, Yasu, Vice Mayor Yasu, and then Councilman Carol.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think, uh, I do recall, uh, I was in the council when we amended, um, the, um, the, um, when we placed a moratorium, I mean, when the city council placed the moratorium, um, and, uh, the rationale, uh, was not that, um, that we did not want, uh, walk-in, uh, or, or whether we want to encourage walk-in or delivery or not, but it was just basically that there are too many, uh, places, um, in Clarkston. At that time, we had about fifteen locations, I remember, where, um, people could buy off-premises, uh, al, packaged alcohol and, um, so I really have a feeling, uh, although at that time I was on the opposing side and, uh, uh, I think we will not be able to issue new, um, license unless we either overturn or, um, or amend like the request, but I think it might be, it might really require overturning the, the former moratorium, um, and allowing, uh, either both delivery and, um, also new package stores as well, because we cannot, we will not have any rationale of, uh, telling if somebody comes and applies for, um, for a walk-in, um, um, off-premises, uh, package alcohol license. So I, I really have a feeling this will open the can of worms, um, and, um, however, if we successfully amend, um, and allow, uh, even including new, uh, licenses, I think it's fine because, um, right now, the mortar and brick stores, um, will be competing with this new model and, um, uh, but there will be no new ones. And how are we gonna, what we're gonna tell if somebody else comes and wants also a license? So this will be really, uh, opening a can of worms. That's just my feeling. But if we successfully revisit the, the, the moratorium itself, I think this might be able to be do, this might be able to be done. Um, thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Carol?
Yes, my question, uh, from Ms. Kilburg was just if you could talk about the precautions that you're going to take how to make sure that no one under twenty-one could order something, order alcohol remotely and be served?
Yeah, so we do, under the delivery laws, um, that were passed from the state of Georgia last year, we do have requirements, uh, that we must meet and follow from the ABC, and that includes a, a scanned ID. So when we do the delivery, they do go through a, a system. We, you know, remind people they have to be twenty-one when they order on, on the app or website. But when upon delivery, you have to show up with your ID. We scan it through a technology system, um, and to make sure it's a real ID. And at that point, it has to be left with that individual. Um, so we can't do contactless delivery where if you were not ordering an alcoholic or age approved item, we can leave your prop, you know, your bag at the door. We can't do that, uh, for age-approved items. If that helps to answer the question, if it doesn't, uh, please let me know.
That, that makes sense. And then my other question was, so the ten thousand square foot, that's not required by the statute, right? It could be, is there a limit in the statute and with the sizes, it could be installed of alcohol, or is that just something that you determined?
That's just something we've, you, we've seen elsewhere. Um, it usually just kind, it gives the idea that, um, some people get worried when you say, oh, it's only delivery only. There's no walk-in that you are granting the right for, um, a mass warehouse to do delivery. And, and if that warehouse, for some reason, um, you know, had, was able to have a liquor license, they'd be doing delivery throughout your jurisdiction. Uh, some, it, that's just something that's a little more controversial in some of the three-tier systems. So we usually kind of try to clarify that these are smaller shops. This isn't, you know, and while we are a quote-unquote not, you know, no walk-in in that sense, we're not a mass, you know, eighty thousand square foot warehouse. That's not really a store. So that's, it's not a, it's not, that's why that's usually in there.
Thanks for all my questions.
Um, I've asked, uh, Mr. Quinn, Vice Mayor Yasu brought up the moratorium, and can you address, uh, kind of how this plays in with the request versus the moratorium, so we can make sure that we're, we have everything we need?
Sure. Um, so what we're referring to is as a moratorium is really a permanent prohibition on new package alcohol retailers. It's been around for about four years or so, I think. And so now we've had a change in the state law effective recently that allows delivery of packages as the, uh, default for package retailers. So the existing convenience stores and other package retailers that exist in Clarkston are now allowed by the state of Georgia to deliver, uh, those alcoholic beverages to customers within Clarkston. That's going to be the case unless Clarkston acts to, uh, opt out of that and prohibit it. So the, the current state of the law and the standard law in Georgia is that anybody with a license to sell packages can deliver them. Now, in Clarkston, we acted some years ago to prohibit any new package retailers. And so that is the obstacle that this, uh, GoPuff has run into. The state law would allow them to deliver in Clarkston only if they have a license in Clarkston. They currently cannot obtain a license in Clarkston because Clarkston does not allow any new licenses. Now, that last statement was imprecise because we do allow new licenses, but only for specialty items that the council at the time deemed to be desirable and not to present the negative impacts of the typical package retailer that they wanted to not have any more of. Uh, and those included grocery stores, growler shops. Um, it's a little too small for me to read on the screen, but I think Mr. Gomez has got it up there. What GoPuff has requested is that their business model, specifically no in-person contact at the store, delivery only, uh, would be added to that list of exemptions. And, and I looked at what they prepared. Um, I thought it was a reasonable way of accomplishing what they seek to accomplish. And I just see it as a, um, political policy decision for the council. You know, is, um, or, or do, do you feel that the negative of new convenience stores that we wanted to prohibit is similarly applicable to this business model? Or do you feel that it's different enough, uh, that you would like to allow it? And, and you know, the, the city council has broad authority to regulate alcohol licenses under state law. And, um, so you, either decision you made, as long as you have a reasonable basis for it, would be, uh, totally legal.
And if the council decided to go forward with this, then it's simply making that update to the, um, section three fifty-eight? To include the after-business. Okay, okay.
Just adding one more category of, uh, what I would call an exception to the prohibition on new package licenses.
And Councilor, do you have, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um, I do have a question. Now, the, I know at one point the city did get sued because someone spent a good deal of money building a brand-new gas station convenience store to find out that they could not get a liquor license. Do they have one now? I, because I think that was involved with the state law prohibiting it being next to a school or something, and the school was.
Right. I don't think they ever filed a lawsuit against us.
Oh, okay.
Um, ma, maybe Mr. Gomez knows the answer to whether they were licensed. The issue was the distance from an education facility and whether that community college counted.
Mm-hmm.
I honestly do not remember the final outcome.
Mr. Gomez?
They, they got their license. They got the license.
Yeah, if you, I think you're referring to the Exxon gas station on Montreal Road.
Right.
And there, I mean, there are gas station and a convenience store. They currently sell beer, wine, and malt beverages, not liquor. Yeah, they have a license like other gas stations.
Okay. I think that's a difficulty. I would be interested in hearing if, um, Chief Hudson or, uh, Assistant Chief Haas has any input on this subject?
In terms of?
On, uh, a different license of beer and wine delivery on this particular?
Well, I, I, I would say from a public safety standpoint, this is, of all things equal, this is likely uh, one of the better, for lack of a better word, uh, this, in terms of how you uh, um, decide or how we manage, uh, the, I guess, the sale, the consumption, uh, whether on-premise or packaged of beer, wine, or, or malt beverages, because people don't have to leave their homes. Um, but, but I get, well, I guess they could deliver to your business. I, I mean, I guess GoPuff, if I ordered online, I guess they could deliver here to ten fifty-five Roland Street. I'm not, I'm guessing they would, but I, I would say.
On both sides of you there, Mr. Gomez.
Yes, but I would say from, from a public safety, uh, this is simply having the, you know, like any delivery service that's taking it to a residence mostly.
Right.
Uh, and they're gonna take it to, I'm going to infer unless, um, the, the GoPuff representative can correct me, but I'm guessing they're delivering not just, I know this is applicable to our city limits, but they're gonna deliver it region-wide, not just within our city limits. There, there, we appreciate that their business is located in Clarkston, their office, uh, but from a public safety, and I don't know, ju, I think Chief Hudson's on the call. I don't really see how this would really create, uh, in the issue or any potential issue, rather.
There's only one thing that Mr. Gomez said that I'd like to correct legally, which is that under the state law, the delivery can only occur within a municipality if you have the license, you know, by that municipality. So they would have to have.
Oh, thank you.
Licenses in each jurisdiction.
Got it.
Did I think I heard Chief Hudson jumping in there?
Yeah, you did. I don't see a problem with this. I really don't.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
I have a question, actually.
Okay, wait a minute, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor. Um, Councilman Perkins had a question, and then you.
Yeah, okay. Madam Mayor, I just had a, uh, just a quick question for existing businesses. Um, would they need to reapply, um, you know, to be able to deliver, uh, how would we, would, would this be sort of, would this be sort of a second license, or how would we work through that? It's more of a process question. Um, I don't know if that would be a question for you, Robin, or, uh, for you, Stephen. But I'm just sort of thinking through if an existing business was licensed as a package store, but then also wanted to start delivering, uh, would this ordinance apply to them, or would they have to reapply?
But Stephen, you could. Yeah, go ahead, Stephen.
Sure. Uh, well, first of all, welcome to the council, uh, Councilman Perkins. Congratulations. Um, but, so the answer to your question is that for existing licensees, they automatically have that privilege under their existing license because of the state law change, and they don't need to get anything new, or additional, rather.
Okay, so we wouldn't need then, just to make sure they were able to, uh, to, to Councilman Carol's question on, um, verifying age and everything, would, we wouldn't need to evaluate their ability to do that in any way, or is just sort of that's under the state's jurisdiction?
Well, it's, yeah, that's all wrapped into the state law. Um, you know, it says that basically they have to follow the same protocol that they would at the counter in the retail store at the point of sale. And that the, um, the licensee is basically responsible for any failure in that, just like they would be at their retail store.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Vice Mayor Yasu?
Yes, I have a question, uh, for, uh, Mr. Quinn, because, um, so if we allow, um, uh, um, a delivery, um, and then in the future, there is nothing that will stop, this will be open, even somebody else might say, okay, I can't open, um, a brick and mortar store. Well, I can just apply for delivery then. So this, there is no end to this. So basically, whatever we pass will be, it will not be, it will be toothless, basically. So that's why I, I think, I really feel this cannot be solved unless we, um, we revoke the new licensing, uh, moratorium, because, um, there is nothing to stop the flourishing of many, many more delivery businesses coming after this one. So, um, so effectively, um, instead of having a convenience store every corner, we'll have the ability of businesses to deliver in every corner, basically, which is almost the same to me, but, but still, um, and, and the other concern I have is, Mr. Quinn, um, how do they check, uh, if somebody's in his home? Um, normally they are not supposed to sell, I think according to state law, but to inebriated people. Um, so I, I really am, I'm very concerned, um, it, especially if we, uh, open up this, if we allow new businesses, regardless if they're, um, brick and mortar or delivery businesses. So, um, I don't, I don't see how we're gonna be able to stop anybody new. So, so I don't know if I under, if you understand my question.
Well, I think I do. I mean, I think your first question or, or, or a statement that I can confirm is that if the ordinance is changing, has changed per GoPuff's request, that would open up an unlimited number of businesses to operate in this manner. You know, they, it, it wouldn't be the GoPuff exemption. It would be the alcohol delivery exemption. And indeed, as many businesses as felt that, that the market could support them would be allowed to, uh, undertake that. Uh, as far as serving to the inebriated person, I think that the state law would a, address that. I don't remember it specifically, but I would just say that, you know, to me, I think that the wha, what's called a dramp shop rule, you know, it refers to the fact that a bar or restaurant that serves alcohol can be legally responsible for the consequences of serving inebriated persons. And almost always, those consequences involve drunk driving. So if the person is inebriated already within their own home, I feel like that's less of a concern. Um, I don't have any, you know, data to address that. Perhaps our, uh, friend. uh, friend from, from GoPuff does, but that would just seem logically to me to be a safer way of consuming alcohol.
So, Woman Hopkins?
I just, I think we need to consider how this is gonna affect the sort of economic ecosystem in Clarkston so far as uh, what it will do to competition, because I think if we were, well, I think uh, Vice Mary Yasu has a point in that if they well, I'll just come back to that, but if they allow, if we allow this, aside from reversing the moratorium, which it would be in effect, but then delivery businesses would be able to go directly head-to-head in competition with brick-and-mortar places. But unless brick-and-mortar places changed their ma- model and started delivering, they couldn't compete with the delivery. And so if somebody was doing delivery, if uh, Lulu started delivering or Thrift Town started delivering, they would still have difficulty competing with somebody who is that's doing essentially alcohol and junk food. I, I don't know, I just think if it would be a nice bonus to be able to like call in my weekly grocery order and get, you know, some veggies and some, you know, nuts and beans and oats and all that stuff people make fun of me for, and also say, can you bring me a bottle of wine with it or something else? But I can't get my groceries from GoPuff. I just looked at their menu and it's like lots of Twinkies and Slim Jims and, um, food that people eat who have been partaking in a lot of things that wouldn't necessarily be allowed, but, um, I, I just think that it would be putting our existing licensees maybe at a disadvantage, and I think we just need to consider that. Because it would be allowing new licenses. Um, but it wouldn't be giving our existing licensees any anything for the additional compensation, and they have the overhead.
Uh, Stephen, this is Robin, uh, Mayor and Council, but Stephen, currently, all the existing licensed package stores, including liquor stores, our grocery stores, they can all deliver the beer and wine, correct?
Yes, right now, they could be doing it right now. They have permission from the city and the state.
Right. We, we did, we did not, due, due to the Georgia Assembly taking the action they did last year, that became effective January one of two thousand twenty-one, a few months ago, we cannot, we do not have any authority or any legality over existing licensed packaged stores, again, liquor stores, grocery stores, convenience stores, with delivering, setting up a business to, or setting up a process to have beer, wine, and/or liquor delivered to, within our city limits.
Well, I, I think that we could act
Right.
to prohibit that, but, but as of right now, we have nothing in place, and they are, they have the green light.
Councilwoman Johnson, you had a co- a comment, a question?
Yes, I have a question, um, for previous council members. Why, um, why did you guys feel a need to prohibit it in the first place? New owners, new business owners being able to, um, deliver. What was?
Well, I would, Cal, just to interrupt, I wouldn't say new businesses. I would say that the ordinance change was to limit the types of businesses. So you, we can't have a new specialty wine shop open up and sell packaged beer and wine.
Okay, got it.
So they just changed the, the types of businesses.
What I recall from the discussion, and I, I don't mean to speak for the council, I know we have some members that were on the council then, but what I recall is that there was a sense that we were getting so many of this one kind of business, convenience stores, and we just wanted to have a more of a variety, and there was a feeling that that need had been fully met within the community by the ones that existed at that time.
I may just say a few words. I think I mentioned a little bit earlier.
Are you, are you addressing Councilwoman? Um, Johnson's, okay, then, all right, you could go ahead and speak.
Yes, sorry. Well, um, uh, I recall, um, that, um, the main reason was, uh, on top of, uh, Mr., what Mr. Quinn said, um, the fact that, that, that we had a small city, one and a half square mile city, where we have fifteen package stores at that time, where, I, I mean, stores that can sell um, packaged alcohol off premises. So, um, we thought that, uh, we had enough, and, uh, unless somebody comes up with a specialty wine store or, or growler shop, um, that, that we, we should, that the council felt that, um, that we need to stop the flourishing of this. So, um, the idea was, well, in a way to diversify, but also to stop the flourishing of the, the overall businesses that are primarily selling alcohol. So, um, uh, I mean, uh, this was, um, discussed thoroughly, and we also uh, updated it and we changed it. And, and the interesting part is that the people who are, who are existing are okay with it, because there will be no more competition for them. Uh, and, um, they were happy with it, but the catch was, they cannot, if they sold the store once, that after that, the person is stuck, he cannot have another, any more alcohol license for that specific business. So basically, that ends anymore, they cannot even apply in the future if they sold it. So they, they had only, uh, ten years a- after we amended it to either sell it or or, um, keep it. After ten, those ten years, there will be no more new licenses, period. So, um, but now if we allow, uh, a delivery business, I really see that is a whole another world, so, yep.
You, Vice Mary Yasu, and Councilman Perkins.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I just had a revenue question, uh, just from a tax deduction standpoint, and I might have this answer three months from now, and I'm a little more familiar with, with these things, but, um, would we be collecting, uh, revenue from sales outside the city, or would it only be sales that were, uh, delivered to addresses within sign Clarkston? City limits. So that's question one, and then I have a comment after that. I think that'd be a question for you, Robin.
We don't, I mean, we don't receive any taxes. They would obtain a, a uh, well, I mean, whatever sales tax are applicable, I, we would issue them a I take it the beer, wine license, but it's not on the sales, it's just an annual fee. And then, you know, the sales would be subject to sales tax. We don't receive any direct sales tax revenue. We only receive the, um, only the one percent additional, the special purpose local option sales tax.
It sounds like definitely a consideration. It sounds like this is what we're getting at. Um, Councilman Yasu is the, uh, you know, will our existing stores, you know, be able to keep up, just from a marketing standpoint? Um, and even just a logistics standpoint. Um, so that, that is something I'm, would be interested to explore a little further, would be putting, you know, replacing, we have four businesses currently that have been operating in this market with wine. And so just that it sounds like we'll be eliminating, would, would be the opening the door to eliminate some of that competition. Which I don't have an opinion on one way or another, but it sounds like a consideration.
Mr. Gomez, did anyone sign up?
Yes, we have we have actually, I don't think Mr., no, Cameron Kilburg, uh, Amy Medford.
Medford. Yeah, three minutes for your comments.
Um, thank you. I have a couple of other questions and concerns, just to sort of further along the conversation. Um, thank you so much, by the way, um, from GoPuff for clearing up the delivery process. I was actually really concerned about that, so I'm glad to hear that you guys scan ID. That's great. Thank you for that. Um, the other thing is, this could be really good as far as encouraging um, diversity and, um, I think competitions are pretty healthy thing. So I think this would be a great opportunity for that. I do understand the concern of if GoPuff does it, then perhaps DoorDash, Uber Eats, or any of those other kind of quick delivery places might as well, but I think that's something that we would have to wait and see how it happened. The other thing is, um, as far as well, to the, to the concern of opening up the moratorium, please, 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 please do not cancel that. Do not overturn that prohibition against all package stores. Um, this is definitely not the time. We want to foster different growth, just like GoPuff. We do not want more convenience stores and package stores. We want other new, different things. I have a suggestion and a recommendation that maybe we approach this and pass it on a twelve-month basis, like put a sunset in this proposal, so that we give it a month, give it, give it twelve months, excuse me, a year, see if it works. And if it's successful and great, then awesome. We can enact it on a longer term. If it turns out to be a bust and we get, you know, fifty thousand delivery places applying for applications, or um, it turns out that all the brick-and-mortar stores are now bankrupt because GoPuff is so successful. There's, there's already an end in sight. So if there's a twelve-month kind of a sunset on it, maybe eighteen months, whatever you guys sort out, that gives a natural check on the policy, especially because this is a new one. And we're in sort of uncharted waters in a lot of ways with this. Um, I don't think this is going to cause any problems with the brick-and-mortar. They can do delivery services. And I would encourage us to check how they're doing delivery services if they're going to do them, because contactless delivering with alcohol sales is scary. The other thing to consider is the state assembly just passed, um, cocktail delivery. So that's gonna be something else that we may need to address and review. And if so, again, having a twelve-month sunset on that gives us an opportunity to test the waters before we commit long-term and find ourselves with some policy and bad consequences. Thank you.
Mrs. Medford. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
Yes, we have Mr. Brian Medford.
Mr. Medford.
We're sharing the computer tonight, so carpooling. Okay, so, uh, actually, this is a tough one, counsel. I don't envy you. This is a difficult decision. Um, there's pluses and minuses on both sides. I have almost been killed twice by drunk drivers hitting my car head-on. So anything that keeps drunk drivers off the road, I am all for. Um, this seems like to be a good option, keeps somebody from jumping in the car and to go get another six-pack, or anything like that. Uh, but I'm also a skeptical person, and I cannot help but think how this would be abused if it was enacted. Um, if we were to open up these new licenses, um, who suddenly will decide they need another side hustle from their business in Clarkston? Or a new hustle business in Clarkston? Yeah, you know, are we gonna have people ordering and delivering at three o'clock in the morning to parking lots of gas stations? You know, how will this, you need to really think, and I do need to say, about the worst possible way this will be abused. Because if it can be found a way and it will turn dollars, it will be abused. Um, I have no problem with GoPuff. Seems like a cool business to me. I'm a Fresh Harvest, uh, customer. Love it. Cooked with it last night. Um, these are businesses that we were trying to foster and include in the city. Um, if we open the door for dollars, people will find those dollars, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Medford, Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
We have, uh, Mr. Dean Moore.
Uh, yes, um, I agree that we should not reverse legislation on convenience stores that we passed. Um, and if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions about what that was all about. And I do think this is a good service to help keep drunk drivers off the road for last-minute runs to the store. Grab alcohol. Um, but the legislation that the state passed is very complex. And reading through it, I'm seeing things in there about the wholesalers being able to have um, uh, tasting parties at the premises of the GoPuff or the different distributors and, uh, and outlets. And so I think that the, uh, council should, um, maybe put this off for a month and study the legislation and make sure that you uh, are aware of all the loopholes that, uh, Councilman Yasu is concerned about. And make sure this is a good decision. Uh, it's, it's easier to take the time to look at it on the front of the legislation than it is to go back and try to reverse legislation. So I think, um, look at the, uh, state, uh, legislation with a fine-tooth comb, because there's a lot in there, and you know how they work in the General Assembly. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And, uh, Ms. Kilburg, I saw you kind of shaking your head. Did you want a moment to respond?
I, I just meant with like tastings and stuff, um, I'd have to go back to the bill. I think the tastings reference, you know, uh, vineyards, wine shops, that's not something when, and the intent here is because it's delivery only, that means there is no walk-in, so there would just be no tastings or any of that type of product. Um, we can only deliver completely closed and sealed uh, product, separate from what is coming out of the restaurant bill right now, which, um, has to go drinks. So a hundred percent, the, the tastings is a, is a separate entity. Those are meant for more of the wine shops or vineyards.
Mr. Quinn, if we were to do this and to kind of piggyback off of what Mr. Medford said, would we have to tighten up our ordinance to kind of say that if, if a retailer were to do this, that they would have to deliver it strictly to homes, or would we have to add any, um, language to kind of reinforce how we would want this to be distributed? So that things like a parking lot or something else, uh, would not fall within that category?
Well, we would not have to do that. I suppose that we could if that was a concern. Um, I don't recall exactly what the state law said with regard to the delivery, whether it needs to, I mean, they need to have an address, but I don't think it said that necessarily needs to be the residence of the person ordering. Yeah, I, I guess that would just be a policy decision for the council. Is that hypothetical, something you're concerned about? And if so, would we want to put in there that you can only you know, deliver to a structure? I'm not sure why you, I, I'm not sure the nature of the concern there exactly. It sounds like it might be about congregating or, um, loitering, which are really separate issues to me.
It sounded like the concern was somebody caught placing an order and having it delivered to the Texaco gas station on the corner of Mel and East Ponce. That's what I understood it to mean, because you can give an address and it could be for a, a gas station or, or an empty lot. I guess the, the question is, does Georgia code allow that? And second, would any company delivering it, would they, their delivery person deliver it to somebody in a parking lot?
I do not know the answer to those questions.
And Ms., Ms. Kilburg, do you know the answer to that, or is your plan only deliberate of residences?
No, we don't, pretty much residences and businesses, uh, universities, school campuses are banned, uh, for delivery. That's pretty standard nationwide. Um, I don't believe there's any limit that it has to be a, a standing structure. So like, if you happen to be at the park and ordered a bottle of wine that we couldn't legally deliver, but that's not something we see very often, and even if that was the case, our delivery driver still have to look and make sure the person is sober, their there's standards have to make that they can actually leave that alcohol with that person. Um, if the person does not appear sober, does not pass the age verification, they have to take the alcohol back with them to the warehouse. So I, I can't say, I mean, I, I've never heard a story of us delivering it to like a parking lot or something like that, but in theory, we don't know what the address is until they arrive. But if the, if the driver, the delivery driver does not believe this person's in their right mind, or other areas that make them feel uncomfortable, they don't leave the alcohol with them. or other areas that make them feel uncomfortable, they don't leave the alcohol with them.
How the definition are, just because you said businesses, how, how and what do you define as business? A business?
We cannot legally deliver to like another retail business, that's state law. So we, because that's dives into the three-tier system. So like, we couldn't deliver to a restaurant or anything like that. That's a violation of state law. And that, the very beginning of the bill, there's a whole thing about the three-tier system, which reiterates that. So this is more like if you work at a law firm and you order some, you know, snacks in, for happy hour and add some wine in there, we would, we'd be able to deliver to that law firm. But we cannot deliver to another alcohol-based business, a wholesaler, a restaurant, or anything like that.
Oh, there it is.
Clarification. Okay. There any other, Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
And Mr. Busing.
Are you on the line? Mr. Busing.
Those are all the ones that signed up to speak for this item.
So Mr. Gomez has put up on the screen the section that says where they cannot be delivered to. Educational places, schools, dormitories. Does not say that it needs to be to a particular kind of structure, just the places it can't be.
That's correct.
And also that, so you could not do a mailbox or a locker, so you have to have a real address.
Also, did you have any other follow-ups? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins. You're on mute. And you're still on mute.
Okay, I would just like to say, I do think it warrants maybe taking another month to look into this more deeply, check with our current licensees and retailers to get a better idea of the impact that it would have. Because although I kind of like, as Ms. Medford pointed out, putting like a sunset clause, a 12-month or 18-month, I think that's a good idea. But I would take the reverse position of since this law passed by the state is just new for everybody, give our current licensees and retailers a window to see if they can and will adapt within this space, or if this is a new type of business that we really need. Or do our current licensees, can they fill that gap on their own? Because I don't want to give it 12 months. And if our current businesses go out of business, then we'll know that we failed. I think, I think we need to be a little more cautious with that, with our current businesses.
Thank you for your comment.
I got a question.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
And I'm curious about the law, if it had any limitations or on the amount? Because I just, I just feel, I mean, there are people who might drive while they're under the influence to get some drinks, but there are also a lot of people who end up partying with their friends and order a bunch of alcohol and then go home from there. So I, I, I mean, I'm sure there is a lot of ways that this law can impact the community, especially in terms of driving while under the influence or whether it is selling on a parking lot or, or, or a place that is not a residence of the person ordering. So I just was wondering, is there a limit in terms of how much alcohol you can get delivered?
Mr. Quinn, I don't know if you have that answer.
I, I, I think the answer is that it's not limited.
Limit. See, that would be up to the business.
Ms. Kilburg, is that, is that the case?
I'm trying to remind myself, and I do apologize, there's been numerous similar state laws passed. Most of them do have a limit. Usually it's about like, what do you call it, a case of beer and a certain amount of bottles of wine per order. So I was trying to scan through the bill myself to remind myself on the limit in Georgia. But usually that's pretty standard. We don't, we're not equipped, we don't do kegs or anything like that. We're personally not equipped to sell, you know, for ragers in that sense. That's not usually what we have stocked. But I do apologize, I am looking through the bill myself to remind myself that there's a cap for Georgia.
To that point, Ms. Kilburg, do you have a limit on the number of times that you will visit a residence? For per, or, I mean, you said there's like, there may be a limit per order, but how many times, if someone wanted to do multiple orders, could they order from you?
We don't have a, a cap. We don't take notice, I shouldn't say take notice. We don't have a system that cuts anyone off, like the order keeps coming in from there. We do take notice if something is, looks fraudulent. But obviously, at the same time, technically, if let's say we just kept ordering, it's like the fifth order for that night, and that driver is going back, or even a new driver is going to that address, either, they should hit that component where they're not going to leave the alcohol. Because at that point, that person won't be sober. And if they are following the state law and the training we've given them, they won't be allowed to leave the alcohol. They'd have to return it. We do not reimburse you for those situations. We do actually put a $50 stocking fee back. So our drivers do not lose their money for that order. So they're not incentivized to leave something behind, because they're not losing that access.
So just, just to make sure for clarification, you don't have, right now, you don't have a cap on the number of times that you can go to a home. It is then at the discretion of the driver to kind of evaluate the number of times the request has been made from that house.
Well, it'd be, because it might not be the same driver. It would be the person that has to address if that person they're leaving the alcohol with is intoxicated. They're not legally able to leave the alcohol with the person if they're deemed intoxicated. Now, if we do get, like I said, we don't have a, a system where it cuts off if someone's done five orders and it's all alcohol. However, our system will pick up and our, our general managers at those locations will pick up that some of the same addresses coming through, and they often pause them and look at it for fraud, which at that point, they can also take a look at what they're ordering and say, I don't think this is a good idea. They're ordering, you know, cases to cases of beer. We don't think they'll pass, you know, the intoxication test. But there's not like a set trigger that says this house has had five orders.
Thank you.
If I may.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, Ms. Kilburg, you, you did state earlier that each time the delivery is made, the ID would have to be present and scanned and match the person actually collecting the alcohol. Is that correct? Okay. So at no point, if I have a large family, I can send my 16-year-old to the door to get this package?
Yeah, no. At no point. If you get like wine delivered to your house for direct shipments, you have to be there and show your ID to that like UPS driver. If you get two packages a day, it's the same thing. We, you can't just say, I was, all right, you checked my ID earlier, my daughter's picking it up. We have to check it every time we leave a package behind. Anything age-oriented, so that's the same thing if it was to back.
And you have to see a person?
Yes, yes, you have to see that person.
Okay, and a person would have to collect the package, no drops?
Yes, exactly.
I think my internet is, okay, great, thank you.
Kara, did you have something?
No, I mean, the only thing I was going to say is, is that, that if you go to like a grocery store, they don't limit you as much as, you know, they would limit here. You could actually buy like six or seven six-packs at a grocery store. Sure, you could only buy one. So I guess my concern about over-ordering is more the nature of the places you actually have to drive to than, you know, the one six-pack that will be here. Because I think there'd be quite a cost to order one six-pack over and over and over, versus just going to the grocery store and picking up, you know, six or seven if, if your interest is in volume. So I'm not as concerned about that.
And thank you. I just wanted to make sure from what they do, that process is clear too. Okay, is, do we have any other comments or questions from the council?
Could I ask just a very quick question? Where are you located in Clarkston?
They're located at 808 Park North Boulevard.
808 what? I'm sorry?
Park North Boulevard.
Industrial, in our industrial park area.
Just off of Church Street.
Gotcha.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Kilburg, if you are free to go, unless you just want to stay.
No, thank you guys very much. Have a great evening and a good rest.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. And we will now proceed to E2, which is discussed. Splatz 04 BNC Roland Street Pedestrian Enhancement and Trailhead Project Proposed Changes in Project Scope. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. As we have brought before the council in January to approve the Mel Avenue, Trailhead, Roland Street Pedestrian Improvement Project, the council approved that back on January the 12th. During those discussions related to that project, there was a request to a few changes in the scope of that project to mainly to add sidewalks along a few sections of the project. We've also looked at, related to that project, some parking lot improvements. Currently a parking lot that's owned by the United Methodist Church that the city has leased for some time. And so this item before you explains and provides a li, a little bit of the, the detail for the changes, mainly again to add sidewalks from, on Roland Street from North Indian Creek to Lovejoy. Add a sidewalk on Rogers Street from Market Street to North Indian Creek. Again, these are areas that currently do not have sidewalks. And then the parking lot that I mentioned, as well as to remove on Hill Street, part of the original scope of the project, which was to remove the landscape median on Hill Street between Rogers and Roland. I'll, excuse me, in the item lists, what those cost increases would be for those changes. Those four changes would increase the project of this cost by over $760,000 by adding, and the items are listed on here, what would, would be added for each section. Mr. Kaiser, our engineering firm is on the call. Larry, anything that you'd want to add or include or provide some other details?
No, sir. It's, Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor, if you, and council, if you want me to go through all the details for each of those additions, I can do that, it's up to you.
I think if you just kind of highlight each proposed change, so we can kind of, you know, make sure we have an overview and then therefore we can ask, ask any questions or have comments.
I would love to go through the details, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
So the first section, first addition is the sidewalk on the north side of Roland from North Indian Creek to Lovejoy. So Roland Street on that section is about 24 and a half to 25 feet wide. The idea is to try to ensure that we have a project that is, that is less, less, to save money if at all possible on the sidewalk construction. That's the important part. And so by doing that, we are contemplating, as we are going to also contemplate on Market Street in a couple of months, and we bring this to your attention, that sidewalk project. And that is to reduce the width of Roland Street to 20 feet wide and place the sidewalk, reset the existing granite curb, reduce the pavement width from 24, 25 feet to 20 feet, move the granite curb out, put a sidewalk in so that you have a sidewalk between the new reset granite curb and the existing utility poles. So there's no utility pole relocations. That's where the cost is. Now, the question you may have is, why don't we just put the sidewalk behind the utility poles? And weave the sidewalk, you know, keep the curb where it's at, and weave the sidewalk on the backside of the curb down the road. The reason we don't is because of cost. We have limited right-of-way on this road, a total of 40 feet of right-of-way. Put in the sidewalk in behind the telephone poles, power poles out there, would result in a number of very significant retaining walls that be built. And so the cost would be more than the 385 that I have there now. So it would be a sidewalk that would be built in front of the telephone poles. It would be, the road is about 1,700 feet long. We also will be, as part of the scope, correcting some drainage problems on the south side of Roland Street by raising the existing granite curb up a few inches. If you go out there, you will notice that for many, many years of paving, there's been no milling done. So every time you pave, what happens? You don't, the curb is for drainage along the road. So on the south side of Roland, we are going to increase the, reset the granite curb, raise the existing granite curb up. We're looking at changing out drainage structures, old pipes that are corroded, relocating mailboxes closer to the road when we're resetting the granite curb, and also adding some benches and trash containers as well. And there's one driveway that we have to relocate as well at the Eastabout location in front of Waggoner. So that is Roland Street in a nutshell. Rob, if you want to go to the next section? The addition of a sidewalk on Roger Street and Mar, which is from Market to North Indian Creek. So in this case, we can put a sidewalk behind the power poles on Roger Street. There is enough hand to do that, just a few obstructions on, on Roger Street to put a sidewalk, but it's a lot more doable than Roland Street. So the, so there's no pavement reduction width on, on Roger Street. There are some specific issues that you, I might want to bring to your attention. There is a section of sidewalk on Roger Street from the Methodist parking lot to Market Street on the north side of Rogers. There's a parcel of land there. On that parcel of land, there is vegetation planted by the property owner, must probably years ago. All that vegetation is within city right-of-way. All that vegetation along the fence line on Roger Street would have to be removed with the sidewalk being installed. And also a small retaining wall heavy built along that fence line. So I want to make sure you are aware of that as well. The project also includes two defined driveways going into Methodist parking lot. The reason for the defined driveways is you can't put a sidewalk across open asphalt. You have to have actual driveway in the parking lot along Roger Street. So there'll be two distinct driveway access points into the Methodist parking lot as part of this project. This also will include a number of additional chicanes. As you are aware, under the existing contract we have with Soul Construction, we have a number of traffic calming devices called chicanes. But as a result of this project, with the sidewalk being proposed, we will add two additional chicanes between North Indian Creek and Hill Street. So that's another, another amenity on this project. The road is going to be resurfaced and milled as well. That is part of the LMIG state funding that we receive from the State Department of Transportation. So that is the essence of the Roger Street project. All right, you want to go to the next one? Okay, the third project is milling, milling the Methodist parking lot. So taking up all that old asphalt, as you know, that parking lot is in awful condition. So we would mill, remove the asphalt, put those, that asphalt millings back on the parking lot, pave on top of those millings, and, and then restructure the parking lot as well. And so that is basically the essence of that project. If you would, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, let me go back to Roger Street for a minute. For many, many years, as long as I have been assisting the city, we've had numerous complaints from the property owners across on the south side of Roger Street with flooding. And every time it rains, that water comes out of the parking lot, the Methodist parking lot, jumps the street and goes into those three or four homes across Roger Street. The Roger Street project corrects that. It includes drainage improvements as well. And so that is, that's wanting to make sure that, that you are aware of that as well. The fourth one is, is as the city manager indicated, removing the landscape meeting on Hill Street. So essentially, that project is to remove the proposed meeting that we have as part of the original contract for Roland Street. Remove that meeting, remove the landscaping, remove the granite curb. We had some new granite curb going in on both sides of Hill Street. And what we would do instead is restructure, pave it as well. And what we would do instead is re-pave it as well. We would pave it. We would then paint angled parking along the one side on the east side of Hill Street and add a double yellow striping for a two-lane road. So you essentially have a two-lane road and you would have angled parking on Hill Street, on the east side of Hill Street. So those are the four projects.
Very much, Mr. Kaiser. Council, did you have any comments at this time?
I had a few.
Okay, Councilwoman Johnson.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Hopkins, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry. First thing, I, I, other than the striping to mark the parking spaces, I, we, you're not talking about double yellow stripe down the middle of the road on Hill Street, are you?
Oh, well, if you get to have some striping down.
Necessary. Why?
It's up to the council.
I would say no. I mean, as soon as you stripe roads, you enable people, I mean, it's just a short road, so people can't really speed on it anyway. It's only half a block long, but as soon as.
It's more of a safety measure, though.
Well, as soon as you put a double yellow, same way as happened on Norman, we had no stripes there. Everybody was popping tires because they had great difficulty like measuring the distance from the side of the road and they were hitting those granite curves and popping the tires. And as soon as you put the yellow stripes there, it enables people to see more clearly where they are in relation to the side. They can take those curves, curves at a higher speed and not hit the curb. So stripes actually enable people to drive faster. So I would, I think that the more neon yellow you have in the neighborhood, the more color pollution it is, and it sort of breaks up that sort of small town, big tree, canopied path feel that is.
Again, it's, it's a safety measure, Councilman. That, that's why it's there, Councilwoman, excuse me.
Have we had several accidents there on Hill?
I don't, I don't, we don't want to have any accidents, but the point is to avoid accidents. But, but as, as Mr. Kaiser said, we can remove it. May I?
I would strongly recommend that. I, I'm still objecting to the yellow that were painted on Poplar Street on the speed bumps and all the bright yellow speed signs. But I think it's just.
Again, it's just a safety measure, and that's the reason it's there.
This is Chief Hutton. Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Chief.
Please, Chief.
I think it is exactly what Mr. Gomez is saying. It is a safety issue because if, if you can't deviate where the middle of that road is and you do have an accident, somebody's got, somebody's going to be at fault. And then for us to try to figure out who's at fault is going to be an issue.
And we could be thrown into being at fault by not properly marking the street as well, but.
Would that not apply to every residential street in Clarkston, though?
No, oh, no.
About a neighborhood residential district.
Councilwoman Hopkins, that is a very good point.
But, but we did improve the street by putting the speed humps on it, and that's what we're proposing on these streets. That's why we do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gomez, and thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. And so you made a very good point. And so next, Vice Mary Yasu. You're, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry about that. Well, I do remember, I think there were two main concerns that were raised a few months, months ago when we were discussing the, the agenda item, I believe, and I think the Hill Street is, it solves the concern that people wanted to have a parking lot there. I really am not really versed when it comes to, and I appreciate Councilmember Hopkins, but I, I really cannot comment much about the, but I know that it will address the concern of residents that they wanted to have a, the parking lot remain there, and I want, I want to make sure that it remains there. And the second concern was sidewalks, because a lot of people felt that there were no sidewalks on, on both Rogers and also, what's the other one?
Roland. Roland.
Yes, and Roland. So, I mean, as long as those issues are addressed, I think it, it works. I believe it works. I'm just not sure what is the overall cost, because I see cost increase separately. Are we about to pick which one, or is it going to be, what is the total cost going to be?
The total cost is listed right before they're each broken down. $760,004 is the total cost for all four changes. And then each change has the cost increase for the first three, for the additions, and then the cost decrease for the removal of the Hill Street, the last one.
So how much will the exact cost will be in addition to this and whatever we passed the last time?
Over 1.76 million. The Council approved, the original project was 1,081,000, so it'd be 1,081,000 plus 760. Larry, if that's correct?
Yes, sir.
That would be the total cost of the project with these changes.
Let me also mention one other thing, Madam Mayor. If the Council approves of one or all, or just a few of these, I would suggest that if you're going to do it, it needs to be done now, whether it's one, two, or three of them or whatever. And the reason I say that is the unit prices that we have from this contractor is outstanding. The unit prices for, for concrete and asphalt and curb and gutter and everything that is part of all these changes, we're relying upon on those same unit prices because the contractors agreed. It's also in my, in the contract that we prepared. If there are any changes, we would, the contractor is, is required to adhere to the unit prices in the existing contract for any new changes. Those changes, those unit prices are excellent. If you recall, this unit, this contract amount of 1,081,000 was a couple hundred thousand dollars less than the next low bidder. So just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Thank you for providing that, Mr. Kaiser. From a budget perspective, Mr. Gomez, what impact in terms of having these changes added to the existing order? What, what, where will we be from a budget?
We, we would like, we would, at this point, have to make an adjustment on the remaining, excuse me, on the remaining SLOSS projects. Our recommendation would be that we would likely defer on most likely the Norman Road project that we've discussed before. That would be delayed for likely at least another year. Or we can take a look at the other projects, but the other projects that we have remaining include the, the sidewalks on Market Street that are, I mean, just likely just as important, you know, whichever might be more is, I think, a little bit of a matter of debate, but, but we could make a, those are really the two remaining projects that we have.
Council, did you have any other questions?
I guess I have one other question. So I understand the desire to keep the parking spots on Hill Street. Is it possible to have a smaller median on Hill Street that would still allow for some parking on the park closer to Rogers? Because if we had the median, I think that could address some of the speeding concerns as well. People would have to slow down to go around the median, but at the same time, you know, there could still be some parking reserved if it was a smaller median. I didn't know if that was an option or not.
So, Councilman, that's a good question. We tried to optimize the amount of parking aisles on that road. So the way you optimize that is you put angled parking in. If you put a, a narrow median on Hill Street, what that does is it eliminates the opportunity for angled parking, and you'd have to put in parallel parking at that point, parallel to the curb line. And so obviously that, you go from, I forget how many spaces we have, 15 or so proposed now with angled parking down to eight or nine parking spaces. So you would have to have a reduction in the number of parking spaces.
You could still have eight or nine spots and that median.
Yes, yes, yes.
They just wouldn't be, they just have to parallel park instead of angle park.
Yeah, that's correct, correct.
We are talking about the road, the length of one block, right? Like this is, it, it ran from the Hill Street House to the Hill Street House. Is this a big speeding problem? Because I walk there all the time and have never seen a huge speeding problem right there.
On what, I'm sorry, on what street?
On Hill Street.
No.
On that, that one block.
No, the, the reason there was a, it was really more of a landscaping feature to complement the other landscaping and the improvements on Roland. That, that was the origin, I believe, Larry, you can correct me, and the reason why it was included as part of the original Trailhead, Mel Avenue, excuse me, Trailhead at Mel Ave, Roland Street, Hill Street project. That, that's the only reason it's there.
And that's how we presented to Mr. City Manager back in 2017 and 18, we had the two public meetings. We showed it, you know, we had all the details, but we showed some landscaping, we showed a median, is what we showed on Hill Street.
Okay. I do have another question. Mr. Kaiser, you said that it's not necessary to narrow street down there between Indian Creek and Market Street. It is necessary to pull out all the residents' greenery there, and I'm not sure, could we not put a chicane around their greenery and have a multipurpose traffic slowing device, have sidewalk go around it and narrow the street? Because I think narrowing the street would be an advantage so far as slowing traffic, because on that part of Roger Street, we have heard, especially since all the traffic has now been diverted from Roland, a neighborhood commercial street, to Rogers, a neighborhood residential street, that if we narrow one to 20 feet and the other one's 24, and, you know, it's just like a straight shot. Now we are really filtering off the neighborhood commercial onto the neighborhood residential. And to say we don't have to narrow that street, we can leave it wide, but we do have to pull out the residents' greenery. I, I'm not sure I follow the thinking.
Yeah, so let me tell you. So the difference is this, Roger Street is about 24 to 24 and a half feet wide. Roger Street's 20 feet wide. That's the reason.
I'm sorry, which one is 20 feet wide?
Roger Street's about 20 feet wide, correct. 20, 21, something like that, 20 and a half feet wide. So you can't put the sidewalk on Roger Street like Roland, because you go from a 20, 21-foot wide road down to a 16-foot wide road. You can't do that.
What is the limit on that?
Minimum 20 feet.
In 30021 that are like 12 foot wide and you gotta drive five miles an hour and pull on people. But they're in Clarkston, and I'm not in the city of Clarkston, but in the zip code of Clarkston, Indicab County that are residential streets. So I'm wondering.
So let me give you an example. Let me give you an example. And so we did something that I've never done in my career on DeBel Street. You know, if you driven down to Bell Street, we built a roadway, basically a, a road that, that was basically dirt and from all the potholes, and we put in as wide of a road as possible while not taking down any mature trees, if you noticed that. And, and so we built a road that, that I was not real comfortable with. Because as an engineer, there are certain whiffs in the state of Georgia or any other state in Georgia, in, in the United States, where they state that in an urban setting, you have to have a minimum width of 20 feet. Strongly recommended to avoid lawsuits and reduce government risks associated with, with a narrow road. So we built a 16 and a half foot, or maybe 17 foot, wide road on DeBel Street because we couldn't avoid, we tried to avoid trees, 100-year-old trees, as well as those apartments that are out there. And plus, we only had 30-foot of right away on DeBel Street. So any other road in the city of Clarkston, if there's sufficient right away, we need to strongly, I'm making it strongly, we keep 20-foot of pavement on every road in the city of Clarkston. That is a, that's a strong recommendation from engineers, been dealing with this for 35 years. Just from a risk standpoint. Now, if you want to, if you want to, if you want to calm traffic down, then you put in traffic calming devices like we are doing with chicanes. That's very, very good, and it's what city governments and county governments do all day long, speed humps, chicanes, easeabouts. But to reduce the pavement width, like we do on DeBel, would, would not be recommended at all.
Isn't the purpose of a chicane to reduce the pavement width? I mean, doesn't, isn't?
Yeah, in, in short sections, correct. Not the entire length of road. Yes, absolutely.
Right. So that's what I was talking about, like just that short section by Market Street where you said you would need to put up. Because I thought when we were discussing this last time, that we had talked about putting bump outs right there. Anyway.
But if you, yeah, right, you know, I see where your point is. So if you put a bump out there, where do you put your sidewalk? So you have to put a sidewalk through there. So you have to put a sidewalk, if you want to put, if you want to reduce the speed, which I understand that, you put a chicane closer to Market Street, right, on, on Roger Street. Well, that's fine, but where do you put your sidewalk at? Your sidewalk has to go behind the chicane. And so you have to impact that shrubbery on the backside of that fence. You have no choice. No choice, unfortunately. It's just a tight area. I mean, I only, I bring it to your attention because I know you need to be aware of that at that location, and it is what it is. I mean, I, I wish I could solve it, but I can't.
Madam Mayor?
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor? Could I take the liberty to share an image right now of a street in Clarkston?
Is it to, is it Rogers, or does it, is it relevant to Rogers?
It's relevant to Rogers, to, to what I'm talking about here. And I need, I think, Mr. Gomez's permission to share the screen.
So Councilwoman Hopkins, what specifically is it about the street that, that you?
I, I just want to illustrate the safety advantages of a narrower street. By showing an image of a street that is narrower, that I don't think anyone could call dangerous.
Mr. Gomez, can you allow Councilwoman Hopkins to share her screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Oh, this would stop your screen sharing for just a minute. Okay. So this is the image. This is a residential street in the 30021. You can see houses on the left and the right.
But not in Clarkston.
It's in, in the city of Clarkston, but I tell you what, this is probably the safest street in 30021 zip code.
I don't believe it's a cut-through street.
Right, and that's exactly what I'm to discourage is for Rogers being a cut-through street. If we're trying to slow traffic on Rogers, then let's, let's do it.
That's what chicanes do, Madam, Councilwoman.
That's correct.
That's the purpose of chicanes.
I'm just saying that this is a beautiful lane that everybody walks on. It's like a country lane, but it's right off Otello in Clarkston, and I just want to illustrate that it's not absolutely necessary to have this, what they have at this end, concrete curves on both sides, 20-foot wide street, for it to be safe. I think this segment here, where it's very well-defined with curbs and drainage, and it's 20 feet wide, is not as safe as the other side where it's just greenery sort of through the woods. That's all. I, I've, like, we don't have to keep to a 20-foot, cut down all the natural greenery approach. I, I think that approach is not necessarily in our best interest anymore.
We'll, we'll make note of that. Thank you for bringing those comments. Any other council members have something that they would like to say? Councilman Perkins?
You, Madam Mayor, I just had two quick questions. The first, and my, my connection was a little bit coming in and out, so I may have missed this. But it's just a question on the removal of the stop signs on Roger Street at that intersection. I had spoken with one of the property owners sort of at that intersection, and he had expressed a concern, one about people running those stop signs, but also the challenge of him actually getting out of his driveway due to traffic. And so I was just wondering if things are, there's. And so, uh, I was just wondering if things are, there, there's some alternatives going in that, that would solve that solution by removing the stop, stop signs, so.
So the stop sign would remain on Hill Street, uh, Councilman. The stop signs on, uh, on Hill Street, I mean, on Roger Street itself, would be removed because the chicanes, uh, will basically act as that traffic calming device. Uh, and so there is no need for stop signs, uh, on Roger Street. Chicanes will do a better job, actually. If you go out there now, you will find, and I've seen it just like everybody else has for years, very few people actually adhere to the stop sign. They coast through the stop sign.
Yeah, when I was, when I was standing out with, uh, the, the property owner out there, I believe we watched three or four people run the stop signs. Okay, that answers my question, um, I just wanted to make sure I understood it. Uh, the second question's more of a general, it, it's connected to the budget, but also with the, uh, understanding the delays with the sidewalks on Market Street. And just interested from a public safety standpoint, if any of these projects might have a, um, a higher priority than others. For example, I know there's sort of that blind curve coming around Mark, Market Street. Um, I've certainly run down that street with, with my kids and realized it wasn't a safe place, and so I don't know, um, she puts in, who this question would be directed to per se, but if there's anything we should consider in terms of prioritizing any of these projects. Uh, it sounds like public safety is a part of all of them, but, uh, I don't know if we'd like to speak to that.
Well, Councilman, as you know, um, we have, as City Manager Gomez just indicated, we're working on the design now for the sidewalks on Market Street, uh, from, um, Rogers to the county line, city line. Uh, and so that's the same conversation we're having now, uh, we'll be back to City Council, uh, in June, May or June work session. And we'll have two alternatives. Sidewalk behind the power poles, going through people's yards, taking out shrubbery and pretty landscaping and, uh, hundred-year-old trees. Or, or, as we're proposing on Roland, the sidewalks would be in front of the power poles, and we reduce the pavement width from twenty-four feet down to twenty feet, and put the sidewalk in front of the telephone poles, where the impact is dramatically less to people's front yards. So that's the presentation we're gonna have in June, Mayor June of this year.
Sure, yeah, I may have worded my question in a confusing way. I, I was more, my understanding was that, uh, by approving these, this, these change orders, we would possibly delay the construction of the sidewalks. And so I didn't know from a prioritization standpoint if one might be.
My, as I stated earlier, my recommendation would be that we look to delay the Norman Road project.
Okay.
Not the, not the sidewalks one, but there's, again, we, we have limited options as to what we could do, but that would be my recommendation.
Okay.
So just, Mr. Gomez, um, and I know Councilman Perkins is new, can you explain what the Norman project is?
Just to make improvements to essentially the, the side of the, well, Larry can give a much better update, but, uh, really just to solidify part of that road that the city has had as a project since the SPOSS funding was approved back in two thousand seventeen. But we, we have, uh, according to at least a couple of council members in the time I've been here, there has been discussion about actually removing that project altogether. Mr. Kaiser has suggested that we don't remove it, we have altered it, at least, well, proposed altering it. Um, but at this point, it, I mean, Larry, unless you can correct me, it doesn't appear to be in a huge, huge priority, something that we need to do, but certainly something that we would need to do over the next two to three years.
Yes, the, uh, Councilman, uh, it, it, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just give me one minute, and let me just, uh, go through a little history of the Norman Road Project. Councilman, the Norman Road Project is rehabilitation of the roadway, because that roadway acts as a dam. Always back Clarkston Lakes. Um, that road is a city road. That road was, that dam was built in nineteen thirties or forties. Uh, when that dam was built, uh, it was built with soils from the excavated lake. So it was used as a foundation for the dam, for the roadway, basically. Over the last seventy, eighty, ninety years, uh, the soils have begun to settle, collapse. Uh, and over the last seven or eight years, there's been movement on the top of that dam, which basically means that that road is moving. Uh, is it unstable? Well, I would say that, that, who knows what will happen if we have another five-hundred-year storm, right? Another hundred-year storm where the water tops the roadway, which has happened twice in the last ten years. So, um, there is movement, is obvious, it is true, it's a fact. Uh, and so is it an immediate danger of collapse? No, I don't believe so. I have walked the face of the dam on both the upside and downstream of that dam. I've had a dam expert who deals with dams statewide, he's taken a look at with me a couple of years ago. So is it, is it ready to fail? No, it's not, there's no water seeping from the face of the dam, and there's nothing of that happening, it's just moving downward. So the recommendation from, from, from me to counsel a couple of years ago was, instead of removing the entire roadway and rebuilding from scratch, which would be a two-million-dollar project, instead, what we would do is we would build a nice retaining wall, uh, that would be built between the downstream creek and the side of the road. We would backfill, uh, between that road and that wall, and you basically buttress the road in place, so it doesn't move ever again. And that reduces the price from a two-million-dollar project to a eight-hundred-thousand-dollar project. So that's the nature of the project, and I hope that answers your question.
Councilwoman Johnson, did you want to ask a question? I wasn't sure, okay, any other councilman?
No.
Okay, thank you, did any other council member have a question?
I just had a question for the, I just had a question for the council. And what, what do they think of allowing the median on Hill Street, but just changing the parking to parallel parking? Because it seems like eight or nine spots would be sufficient for the residents, considering that there's also a huge parking lot next to them with the North American Mission Board that they can use pretty much all the time, except for Sundays and special events. So I, I wondered what the rest of the council thought about that idea, if there was any concerns with it.
I would have a concern with it, I think that's a, a lot of resources. You're talking about a lot of resources invested between one North American Mission Board property and another North American Mission Board property, and a huge amount that, we don't have another, like, wooded median like that anywhere in Clarkston, and we have it between two private properties of the same owner. It, it seems like we might not be necessarily distributing our resources fairly. With, and, and that kind of brings up a question that we touched on last time, and I'm wondering, Mr. Gomez, if you did ever get to go back, if there was a traffic study done on that left-in, left-out, um, thing at the end of, well, both sides of Roland's and, um, Indian Creek.
I'm sorry, what, what you said, to do a study on the left, you mean the right-in, right-out, Roland?
No, I'm, I'm wondering if a traffic study was done, not to.
Yes.
I mean, it's already in there, but I'm just wondering if it would be possible to get the results or to see that traffic study on, on that.
Ms. Hopkins, I will send you the traffic study that was done three years ago, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
The other question I had was, I think when we talked about it before and it came up with, uh, when we were talking about Wagner Street, was to change the location of the easabout to maybe be closer to where the Jolly Street was? So is that something that can be done? Or what would be the, I think that was a concern with the residents, is that something feasible?
So, Miss, Madam Mayor, you mean another easabout between Wagner and Lovejoy?
No, just moving the one that was gonna be at Wagner, further east.
Oh.
Moving it further east toward Jolly or at Jolly, and where the road curves.
Oh, 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 um, yeah, that's, that's doable, uh, Madam Mayor, yes, it is.
That was a concern that when we talked about Wagner, a lot of residents thought it might be better to have it there versus where Wagner is, in terms of Jolly.
Okay, I thought, oh, yeah, I understand, I thought the reason we had it there, if, uh, I may be mistaken, was because there, everybody was worried about the cut-through traffic on Wagner. And so that easabout was being put in so that, that you would limit, you know, basically, you'd be able to come in right-in, right-out. You couldn't take a left out of Wagner onto Roland, and, and so that's why we put it there originally.
And that's a more logical place to put it, because again, the road doesn't curve, but as, as Mr. Kaiser stated, we can look at it. I think really, yeah, the only, there were a couple of residents that I think have commented about. Originally, they thought it was gonna be a big roundabout, and it was gonna take their property or a portion of their property, and that's not the case.
All work within ride-away, with that easabout, Madam. Here.
Perfect, perfect, yeah, thank you. Are there any, and, and when you say relocate the mailboxes, what exactly are you gonna do with those mailboxes? Are they gonna?
Yeah, so what we're gonna do is, yeah, I, so when you widen a road or you, you move sidewalks around, you take the location of the mailbox where it is now, and you move it to the, closer to the street, right? So if you put a sidewalk between, between where it's at now and, and reduce the road width, the only way the mailman can get to the mailbox is if you move the mailbox from point A closer to the road, which is where the sidewalk's going to be. So all we're gonna do is move the sidewalk, I mean, move the mailbox, relocate it, basically, is what we're gonna do. So mailman can get to it.
If there aren't any other questions, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
I just have a question about the item that says they would, uh, redo the driveway in the right-of-way for all of the affected properties. Apron, and I'm wondering if residents will be given a choice about that, or do they automatically get a concrete? Like, I don't know if anybody down there wanted to do a pebble driveway, but if they did and didn't want a concrete apron, would they have that option?
So here is why that is a normal prod, normal part of a project like this. Uh, Mr. Medford and Mrs. Medford would tell you, as well as their neighbors, uh, that they are experiencing a significant drainage problem. If you go out there now, uh, folks over the years have, uh, modified the entrance into their driveways because, because the water's shooting down their driveway into their yards. And so what we would do with these concrete driveways within ride-away, uh, is we would reconstruct what's out there, which is, I wouldn't say, Mr. Medford may, may disagree with me, they're not exactly the, the most artistic driveways out there. And so we will, we'll make them nice and clean-looking with concrete, uniform down the entire road, and they'll function very nicely, um, very nicely from a drainage standpoint. Uh, is also one outward, one driveway out there that's, uh, basically stone. And we would also build a concrete driveway within ride-away, uh, on that one driveway. And so you have a nice, clean, uniform look, um, driveways that will last for a long time, and will also help with drainage.
So I guess the quick answer is no, they don't have a choice about it, they're getting concrete apron?
Yes.
This, okay. So even the stone one, is that stone that was, like, laid in concrete, or is it just stone on soil?
It's stone, it's so, it's stone on dirt, on soil, yes. And my suspicion is that property owner, my suspicion that property will love that.
They might.
I would think.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other questions? And just to clarify a point, there were other residents who called in about the roundabout. Not necessarily on the, on the meeting call, but they did call about it. Any other comments or questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, Mr. Gomez, did we have anyone to sign up?
Yes, Mr., or, hold on. Amy Medford.
Ms. Medford. Um, hi, as a resident of Roland Street whom this directly and immediately affects, so I got pretty good standing on this issue. Thank you, Larry, so much for the sidewalks! And, and council people, sorry, sorry. Um, yes, sidewalks would be great, there's so much pedestrian traffic on the street. And having a sidewalk so that folks can walk safely around would be wonderful. And taking the reduction in the street size is, was a really smart call. That was some, uh, good, good working out with that. Um, it'll also help reduce a little bit of the speeding, which I know the roundabout, which really does need to be at Wagner. That is absolutely the place for it to be. And speaking to about eight residents on the city that I know, that on the street that emailed the city and spoke, we all want that on Wagner, that is the best place for that to make the most impact on. Um, reducing the street from twenty-four to twenty will help that. Um, I do want to know if there will still be able to have on-street parking, but I assume that that'll still work out okay. Um, with the twenty-foot street, that wouldn't be a prob, should not be a problem. Um, as to the issues with, um, Hill Street, my comment and concern there is you will either need a median and have parallel parking, which, by the way, those wooded medians are in other places on the city. If you have not driven down Ponce, where the side, you know, where the two-eighty-five comes in, put in some beautiful medians. They're not wooded yet, but they will be, give those trees a few years to grow, and it'll look great. So it actually fits within the overall city imagery, especially what you've put in along Market, and in the other streetscape projects, having a wooded median fits in with what we're doing everywhere else in the city. And so it adds a cohesive, comprehensive look to it. If you really hate medians, okay, if you're gonna add that angled parking, you have to have those double parallel lines for safety, which because of the angled parking, you'll have people trying to pull in and out and cross those lines. That's going to increase your chance of getting hit, people crossing over into the other lane. So it's either or, you either get angled lines and, and, yeah, you either get angled parking and parallel lines, um, or you get the parallel parking and a beautiful median, which I think is a wonderful suggestion and idea, because that then fits comprehensively with the whole citywide streetscape project. So that, I think aesthetically, would be the best choice, is to put a median and just add parallel parking. Absolutely have to keep parking on Hill Street. Otherwise, go with double yellow lines for safety. Um, and just please to the sidewalks, the residents are very excited. We've talked to all our neighbors, and they are also very excited to get sidewalks put in. So we really look forward to those, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Go, um, thank you, Mrs. Metford. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
Yes, Mr. Medford, Brian.
Metford.
Yes, uh, so the plan, I think, is very creative. I appreciate Larry's creativity on finding ways to place sidewalks around the city. I very much approve of that idea of walk, encouraging the walking more. Um, it's becoming warm now, and the number of pedestrians and bicycles on the path has grown exponentially. And so giving a protected lane, a protected separate sidewalk for the people to walk or to push their strollers, um, is very important, uh, especially with the, the speeding trailer is, uh, now back on Roland Street. Uh, I'll go put a fresh coat of wax on it tomorrow, make sure it's all looking good. Uh, but it, we're trying to address that problem, because my concern is this section of Roland Street, we don't want it to be known as the spot in Clarkston where you gotta make sure your kids are near you when you're walking, because it's too dangerous to be on the path. That's one of my concerns, that we don't get that, uh, stigma. Uh, but the other projects that, uh, to be done, uh, I think this all fits within the scope of our supposed projects. Yes, the price tag is more than we had initially started with, but Larry's point of the cost of materials right now, if everybody, I've been tracking these kind of things, and by spare time, um, yeah, materials pricing has gone up and is continuing to go up, there's no stop. So if we've got a contractor that's willing to lock in on some of these costs, that's a very advantageous right now. So, uh, for those who have been, uh, looking around for a while, we're still playing catch-up on decades of letting this city stagnate in our, um, in our infrastructure. And we have to pay the piper at some point, and that's where we're at right now, we gotta pay the piper. So we just need to buckle down, get this stuff done, get the city looking spick and span again, and, um, do what we can, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. Mr. Gomez, did anyone else sign up?
Yes, we have, uh, Lee, there's Lee Gwynne, signed up to speak for this item.
Hi, yeah, thank you, um, good evening, I'm a.
Hi, yeah, thank you. Um, good evening. I'm a resident on Roland Street, um, at the intersection of North Indian Creek. I just have a concern about the sidewalks. Um, personally, I've had many incidences of crime and loitering on my property. Um, not in the far future or very recently as well. So I, from, coming from my perspective of that, um, I feel like the sidewalks can increase the likelihood of loitering, um, and some crimes, um, for some of the properties on the street. So I've, I've had instances where people come up and like literally sit behind my backyard when I'm walking my dog. Um, the other point I wanted to speak to is that ever since closing North Indian Creek, the traffic coming from there, the traffic is a lot quieter on Roland Street. I walk my dog frequently and I, I, I don't see why, I think not having a sidewalk would be just fine as people are walking on the asphalt. There isn't as much traffic. Um, I don't feel fearful of my life walking on that street. Um, and I, I feel like I understand where the need for sidewalk is coming from, but I think we really need to assess, is it purposeful? Because many times I drive around the city, I see that there is a sidewalk, but people still don't use it. Or that sidewalk gets left out, um, and not frequently maintained. So I don't think we need a sidewalk for the sake of a sidewalk. We need to really make sure if it's going to be used to its best ability. Um, and additionally, is it possible to use some of the fundings for maintenance of our current street? Like, for example, we have a couple of potholes that's been around Clarkston for quite a while, um, like two large ones coming from Thrift Town towards the bridge on East Pond. And many people cross over to the other lanes to avoid that, or actually drive closer to the sidewalk to avoid that. So I, I really think, um, coming from my perspective and what experiences I have had on my property, I, I think a sidewalk on Roland Street isn't necessary, at least the part of Roland Street where it's closed off from, uh, North Indian Creek.
Can't hear you.
Are there any other comments?
We, yeah, and Mr. Dean Moore also.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you for taking into consideration the, uh, the, the people's choices and, uh, getting rid of that island on, uh, Hill Street and taking care of the drainage issues on Roland as well as the Methodist, uh, runoff and paving on that. That's, it's a great thing as well. And, uh, thank you for stressing the importance of the sidewalk on Market Street. We've been after that probably as long as I've lived here, but it was highlighted in the Clarkson Active Living Initiative Report. It was issued in twenty twelve and, um, I'm looking forward to having that completed at some point in my lifetime. So thank you for the good work you're doing.
More and Mr. Gomez, are there any other comments from the public or questions?
That is all.
Thank you. And so at this time, counsel, do you have any closing comments as it relates to this? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for providing your expertise and information. And Mr. Kaiser, yes.
One more comment real quick. Uh, we, the city manager and I would like to have a, a public meeting someplace on the road, and I wouldn't say the public meeting, it's a gathering of the neighborhood so that I can bring the plans out and show the public who lives along that road, if council approves of the project, exactly what's gonna take place on the street, so they have a real good visual of what's going to occur.
Plan. I think the community would appreciate that.
Can we get beer delivered?
Okay.
I'd like to say something on the subject.
Mr. Busing is on the call. He had signed up, but didn't, we called you last time. Go ahead.
Okay, go, Mr. Busing.
Well, yes.
Go ahead and speak.
Yeah, the, uh, subject started out as the Rogers Roland Street project, but then, uh, Larry Kaiser chose to talk about five minutes about the dam project, Norman Road. Uh, it's not really a dam under Georgia law. Georgia law is very brief on this matter after the accident at Tacoa in nineteen seventy-seven, which killed thirty-nine students. When an earth and dam broke, Georgia overhauled its entire dam laws in the state. And they really read fairly simple. I don't want to get into the verbiage of them now, but if you find them, you would find, I believe, that it's not a dam. It's, it's a road. Norman Road, and you got a little lake on one side, and you have a baseball field on the other side. And the road goes in between it.
Thank you, Mr.
This is, uh, this is just a pork barrel project. Eight hundred grand, splosh money. It's not ours. No, it's other people's money, but it really is our money. It's taxpayer money. Uh, the dam, oh, I mean, the quote-unquote dam is not in danger of doing anything to anybody at any time. Pork barrel is institutionalized corruption. That's the definition in Webster's dictionary. Doesn't mean that anyone's really taking any money under the table, although, you know, I guess that could be, but uh, it's, it's not needed. Just look up Georgia dam laws since nineteen seventy-seven in the Tacoa accident. Kelly Barn Dam. We don't need it. Let's just save the taxpayer eight hundred thousand dollars, maybe pave the road. They already paved Norman Road, that little dip where the so-called dam sunk a little bit, and it's doing just fine. It's not gonna hurt anyone. Water spilled over that road before in a heavy rainstorm, flooded the field a little bit. So let's just, in difficult times, let's keep those purse strings tight. Thank you.
Okay, if there aren't any other comments, questions, we appreciate all this input and especially from the community for, um, the changes that are proposed. And we will move now to item E three, City Charter to Modernize Certain Provisions to Admon Article Four of the Charter Regarding Budgeting, Appropriations, and Audit to Repeal Conflicting Provisions. And I think you had Councilwoman Johnson on that one.
That might be in, just an error, but thi- this is the item that's been brought several times. And this is the final proposed, uh, changes in the, in the form of an ordinance. And the ordinance is li- lists all the changes that are identified in the item. Specifically, um, again, they're listed on there. The court has the authority to enforce nuisance abatement, amending the oaths, uh, enhancing fiscal administration through the requirement of the budget message and procedures from amending appropriations and enhancing the audit function by using a certified, uh, public accounting firm and expanding the, the audit review, the audit report, and making it available to the public. So again, those are all included in the proposed ordinance to finalize the Charter Review Committee recommended changes.
And I don't, and these are, these are, again, the changes that were presented by the Charter Review Committee.
Yes, yes.
And so with that, I don't know if, uh, Mrs. Ms. Hood is on the call and if she would want to say anything because she was the chair for that. I don't know if she's on the call right now. Um, but again, these were changes and so just from a procedural handling of this, we would have two readings of this. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay, and as a council, we can vote up on all or we can select which ones we do want to pass or not. I mean, I just want to make sure that's clear as well. And so if you, Mr. Gomez, are you gonna kind of walk through the?
You want me to go through each one? I can.
We, I think we went through the changes before, but over that.
I'm sorry, so you faded away.
I said the ones that were outlined particularly in the paragraph that I want to make sure those were covered as far as any changes. I think you had the oath and then there were some other ones that you listed on the, the page.
Yeah, I can go through this individually if you like, so. Right, so the ordinance is making changes to the charter, again, that the Charter Review Committee reviewed and recommended. This has been presented at council work sessions and meetings several times in the time that I've been here. Uh, but so it's the specific changes, again, oath of office before anybody takes the oath. This is what the oath will say, um, as we had Councilmember Ha, uh, Perkins take earlier, uh, section four oh two, that just some changes that there will, the budget mess. This is inserting into the actual charter that the existing procedures for the budget will now be listed in the actual city charter as opposed to being in an ordinance, uh, just in the regular code. Four oh five, again, the annual audit that we simply make it available for the public to see and that we put it, uh, on our internet site or provide copies if anybody would request a copy. Again, this was just not in the charter. We're recommending that it be inserted, uh, into the charter.
Gomez, counsel, do you have any comments at this time? No, okay. Um, no comments. And again, we'll have another reading of this. And as a body, when we vote on this, we can agree on all or we can select which ones we want to approve or not approve. And at this time, yes.
Well, maybe Stephen needs to clarify. Stephen, the, there, the council will be adopting this ordinance as it's written. If, I guess if they make any changes, then they would need to make that before they vote on it, correct?
That, that would certainly be preferable, yes. Um, and another point of clarification is that the it's not just two readings, but two votes.
Right.
So the council has to adopt the same ordinance twice.
Twice.
So we're currently on, scheduled to vote on this ordinance a week from today.
And then the second time would be at the May, uh, we would have it at the April work session and then a second vote at the May council meeting.
Right. And, and they need to be exactly the same both times. And, uh, we've made arrangements to make certain publications upon the first approval, uh, to follow state law to inform the public uh, before the second approval.
Thank you for that clarification. So counsel, please look at this now. If you are, are okay with what is presented in this ordinance, um, please let me know if there's something that needs to be changed or removed. Please let me know at this time so that we can be, then be prepared to vote next week. And you heard the changes. Okay. And if I don't hear anything, we'll have the public to give comments at this time and then we'll come back just to give you an opportunity to review. Mr. Gomez, are there any comments from the public?
Yes, we have three. The first one, Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford, please, thank you.
Uh, yes, so I am on the Charter Review Committee. Uh, just wanted to let the council know that these changes were all done with a great amount of thought, uh, reviewed many times, uh, lots of public input when we can get people to come to the meetings. Um, we thought we had probably one of the most fair, uh, most inclusive reviews, uh, of any committee, really. Uh, but especially of the charter in its time. Uh, and so I appreciate the council taking this up. Uh, it seems like it's been forever since this, we finished this. Uh, it'd be about time to do again here soon, actually. Uh, so, but the, I said, the changes were not done willy-nilly. I think, uh, the leadership that you see on the, the committee from Susan, um, the members that we have in the committee, we're not exactly a bunch of people that jump to conclusions quickly. Uh, so the, the changes are done, uh, we think thoughtful. I mean, you can change what you want. It's ours, we're just a recommendation, uh, committee. But, uh, I would hope that, uh, at least do something with it because we sure worked our butts off on this thing, so. Uh, hopefully Dean will, uh, chime in as well, uh, as a, another, uh, member of the committee as well. So, thank you.
Yes, and thank you to the Charter Committee for all the work that you did to get this and to provide the recommendations. So we definitely appreciate the time that you spent to provide this to the council for us to review. Mr. Gomez, are there any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Yes, Mr. Moore.
Uh, thank you, yes. Uh, thank you, Brian. The, um, the work we put in is, uh, uh, was hard and long and, um, uh, very serious and look forward to, uh, this finally passing. And as Brian says, we're on the verge of needing to do this again. So, uh, thank you.
Mr. Gomez, who else signed up?
Uh, Mr. Busing.
Mr. Busing. Mr. Busing, you have the opportunity to speak now.
I didn't sign up for this one. Hello, I did not sign up for this one.
Okay, thank you.
He signed up for all of the items to speak, so.
Oh, okay, well, thank you, but I didn't want to speak on this one. Thank you.
Thank you for wanting to speak. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on, counsel. Um, again, I gave you a moment to reflect on, on the ordinance. Were there any changes or updates or any, anything else to this? Yes, counsel, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I would just like to say how much I appreciate the Charter Review Committee, uh, for all their hard work. I did attend a few of those meetings when I very first started, um, attending things in Clarkston. And that group was probably the most thoughtful, professional, diligent group I've ever seen on a team on anything ever. Um, I, I kind of quit going because clearly they didn't need me. They had it in hand and, um, were well ahead of me. But I think they did an excellent job and I was very impressed with their professionalism and thoughtfulness.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmen, councilwomen, are there any other comments? Okay, well, it sounds like we are going to move forward with the, uh, Charter Reviews Recommendations. Again, thank you for the committee and all the work that they did. And we'll proceed with item E four, which is Discuss Proclamation uh, Recognizing Pet Day, Pet Month for April. And so this is one where we've normally, in the past, we've had recognition of pet month, uh, which is April. And so with that, it was great to have Ms. Tipton to talk about cat colonies, but also to, um, make sure that we are mindful and that we look at our four-legged family members that we have. And so to coincide with this, we're also partnering with the, um, Georgia Animal Alliance to do Pet Day, which will be April twenty-fifth, where we will have the opportunity to have low-cost, um, shots for our pets as well as the opportunity to have rabies shots as well. So we just want to make sure, um, in terms of protecting those four-legged family members that we provide this type of proclamation for them. There any other comments or questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Gomez, were there any comments from the public? Mr. Gomez?
No, no, madam.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we'll just move on to the next item, which is review and discuss the recent adopt, adopted American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one, ARPA COVID-nineteen Funding Assistance and its Potential Uses. And I'd ask Mr. Gomez to put this on so that at least, you know, we can start the discussion. The funds won't, uh, come to us, uh, probably in the next couple of months, but just Probably in the next couple of months, but just to make sure that from the from a radar, we we have this discussion. Mr. Gomez.
So as you stated, Mayor, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, as I'm going to call it, Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. Somewhat similar to its predecessor, the CARES Act, this is funding. That will be provided directly from the federal government to all cities, towns and villages throughout the United States. Our allocation has been estimated to be just under four million dollars. Which will be distributed in over two years. Essentially fifty percent in the current year, fifty percent in two thousand and twenty-two, we will have. Up to the end of two thousand and twenty-four. To spend the money, I've included here in the agenda item some of the details, but essentially. The we're not allowed to receive more than seventy-five percent of our general fund operating budget, which we the. The estimated allocation to us is not greater than that, so we are fine there. The funds are will be passed through the state, the state cannot withhold them, these will not be passed through the county. However, all of these details have not been finalized in terms of the essentially the when, where, why. Excuse me, when and where, as you stated, we don't know when we will receive the distribution or conversely every other. Municipality and county as well. So those are still being developed as of this morning, I had not heard anything. I know the National League of Cities will be having another call on the item on Friday. And I just I'll plan to listen in on that call, maybe they'll have updates, but. Essentially, the money can be spent on pretty much. Any type of response or most types of response to COVID nineteen. The negative economic impacts, we can use it very similar to the CARES Act. In a variety of different programs and assistance, etc. About the only, there's a couple of additions that the CARES Act did not have. One being that we can use the money to replenish lost revenue. So I've mentioned a few times about certain revenues that we did not collect as a result of the pandemic, such as. We did, we stopped renting and we still haven't resumed renting our pavilions, we did not open the pool last year. Because we were closed, we did not provide entertainment permits that we do every year. So it's not a sizable amount of revenue, but we will. Determine exactly what that is to make sure, we'll have that even with our audit, but. But essentially, we're looking at roughly a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars that we did not collect. Items that we can, that we have enough evidence and obviously we can confirm and verify that we did not receive those. Also, you can, as number four states on the screen. You can make necessary investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure, which the CARES Act provided, but it's interesting, this was specifically. Listed, so this has a little bit, you know, much broader of what you can use the revenue for. So we can a little bit more than we could with the CARES Act. I did include in the item, the what we spent the our CARES money, the one point four million on is also. In this item and I provided a little bit of the detail as to. What those what we spent that money on. And then at the end of the the agenda item, again, just really for informational purposes. Is the presentation. That we received from the National League of Cities through and GMA. From a couple of weeks ago, that really kind of gives you the background of it, some comparison to the CARES Act. Some of the data and statistics on the funding and what the impact has been throughout the whole state of Georgia. So there's a lot of information on here, really more just in case anybody wanted to find out exactly what this was and. How we can use it, it's it even, you know, specifically list that. We can use it to to provide additional pay to employees, they're defining it as premium pay, we've called it hazard pay. So as I said, revenue reduction. So. That's the information currently. Hopefully, we'll know more over the next couple of weeks, hopefully, maybe even at the end of this week, but knowing how. Sometimes the federal government works, it might take a little bit of time. But certainly both the National League of Cities and the Georgia Municipal Association are the ones that are providing. Quite a bit of the information and the research. One other item to note that's on the screen right now. Is that the ARPA also includes direct funding. For specific services like health and humans or transportation. Education, so these are to go directly to specific industries, specific entities. That the CARES Act sort of had, but this is a lot more involved, even, you know, again. Specific funding to provide for housing assistance. You know, even it provides the just other, a lot of other funding sources for a variety of different programs that the that the public can access. So very comprehensive, very elaborate and. We'll see what what happens, again, we have until the end of December thirty first of two thousand and twenty-four. That to spend these funds once we receive them.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez, for that overview. I know we we did a lot in terms of rental assistance for our residents. But I I wanted us to make sure as we're thinking about this and we probably could do. A need and need assessment, just to kind of see what are some of the needs. What we've seen as a result of COVID that we can utilize this fund is that we didn't do a lot for our businesses. And I know I've had communications with a lot of businesses and. While from our in our revenue, you know, we look pretty good, a lot of them were still suffering, they were, a lot of them were saying that they're still down thirty percent. Especially some of our restaurants, some of our other businesses that had to close down for a length of time. Earlier last year. So definitely making sure we look at that and looking at some workforce development for our community, I think would be very beneficial. And now that we even talked about the broadband and doing some some type of broadband for our city as a whole. I think those are very important things to take in consideration. And I hope in terms of the council, if you have some other ideas and that we can, you know, definitely do an assessment. That will help us direct the money to the right resources and to who we need to provide. This type of support, whether it's internally from our own government or externally to our residents and businesses. And with that, are there any comments from the council as it relates to this? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I'm wondering if anyone has any ideas on the best way to go about doing a needs assessment to see. Who it is among our residents that have taken the biggest hit and why? As far as what would be the best way to help them? I'm pretty sure there's some master of public health students that would love to help out on a project like this, but. Other than recruiting students, if we have any ideas, how we're going to go about assessing that?
And and with and to that point, we've been doing a lot of things with Georgia State and their Prevention Resource Research Center. So they are also a great resource in terms of leveraging. Questionnaires and those types of things, especially if you're looking at questionnaires for our businesses, questionnaires for our community, our residents. And even the ones that we know have been impacted by the rental assistance, so we know we have. What, four to six hundred people who we helped throughout that process, so that's another way we can leverage them as well. Thank you for bringing that point. Councilmembers, any other comments?
I would say is we need, the one other thing I would say is we need to think about the timing of how we do this. Because it's possible, we have to spend it by two thousand and twenty-four, but by two thousand and twenty-four. Inshallah, we won't be still facing a huge impact from COVID. So we have to think about, do we want to time? The COVID element of this earlier and then maybe something that may not be as directly related to COVID like broadband for later. When we get the second tranche of the money. So I was just thinking, you know, we may need to think about exactly how we time, how it's spent.
Perkins?
Yeah, I was gonna say, just just bouncing off of that, I think it would probably be a good idea to to sort of identify. What the more immediate needs are, you know, and providing risk to communities, I know you mentioned business owners, you know, so are there are there folks? That are kind of same thing we did with eviction, is like are there other people who have insight into broader communities where we could accelerate this? My only, while I'm a data junkie, my only concern with with doing needs assessments is a lot of times, you know, the. It can take a while to get those results and get actionable information from them. And so I'm wondering if we sort of take a more immediate, if there's ways to get get, you know. Eighty-five percent accuracy by engaging business owners, asking for certain documents, possibly engaging landlords, getting an assessment of those needs. And then perhaps with the municipal broadband, maybe even doing, having some longer-term conversations, you know, the impact of, you know, that. The pandemic has had on education on on some of the more chronic issues, where I think a needs assessment might might be really, really helpful. So I guess we could have a conversation on how to scale the, you know, the dollar amount towards each of those projects, but that would be my suggestion.
And that's that's why I asked Mr. Gomez to put it on now. Because we are not sure when we're getting the funds, so if we can start that process now. That'll that'll give us time that when we actually have the funding, we'll be ready to rock and roll. So Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I think you clearly stated it that. We definitely need to revisit some of the projects that we already worked on the previous year and. Which has practically saved so many families from eviction, that's really, but I think we definitely have to do. Robust workforce development and we don't have excuse of time, I mean, it's still two thousand and twenty-four, we have plenty of time. So it should be, we definitely need to absolutely prioritize in terms of short term, those who need direct assistance. Soon as we get the money, but workforce development will be. One of the only things that will actually help the communities, the people who are unemployed for the rest of their lives. It's not just about, I mean, we're talking about people who could. Change their future, getting a job that pays good money and. So we, I mean, the last time it was not, I mean, we did not really have a plan, we had the ideas, but. We could not come out with the plan to to enact robust workforce development. And I think this is the right time now, we need to revisit it, all those things we did and those the ones that worked. Utility assistance, rent assistance, those can be enacted right away, but the the. Especially the workforce development will be very critical. Because it helps, it pays for itself in the future and. I think we need to seriously consider having some something that actually could impact our communities. For the next so many years. Thank you.
Vice Mary Yasu, and you're you're absolutely right, we we have to look at how we can help those individuals who were impacted by COVID. And, you know, when you look at that workforce development, what we did before was really job placement. But we really need to take this time now to say, how can we do it? How can we have a coordinated effort to do workforce development for our residents so that. They are able to be able to have a decent wage and especially where some people now are underemployed, just trying to find something to work so that they can kind of stabilize themselves. So thank you again for that comment, Councilwoman Johnson, did you have a comment? Okay, thank you, any other comments from the council? Hearing none, Mr. Gomez, do we have council comments from the community?
Yes, Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Yes, always already some great conversations going on, some good ideas, I love to hear it. So all of seriously, everything I've heard so far has been great, I love what y'all are thinking of. One of the ones that I actually wanted to speak about tonight was, I think, the need for a municipal broadband or municipal mesh network. I think it's become, I'm a big fan, I think internet access is actually utility, it's no longer an option nowadays because of how everybody has to access. School, job listings, medical, everything. And while our local internet providers supposedly give lower-tier options, unless you have a flashlight and a mining pickaxe, you'll never find it on Comcast's website. They make it very difficult to find. I think we could make some inroads in the area by providing some simple internet access with some of these funds. There's some ideas out there, I've already seen with some local cities that have done that, we're actually in an interesting area here in Clarkston. There are several fiber optic network nodes that run through the area that are very close to the city, even some through the city. And this is even before Comcast, I mean, even before AT&amp;T and Google Fiber came through. So we have some of the older dark fiber lines through here that could be used possibly. So I'd love to see some, at least some research into it to see, and I'm not talking about covering the entire city, maybe just certain areas of that. And seeing that is definitely something that can be done with the funds per the instructions I'm reading here. I definitely agree with that, I definitely like the idea of the workforce development. I know Ampleo is here in town. And so any sort, anything we can do to help prepare people for careers, jobs, vocational, anything like that. Especially, I'm a big fan of vocational training myself. So anything that we can do with those funds. I definitely don't want to see anything happen to the funds if we don't spend it in time. I think, but I don't think we're going to have that problem, I think we've got enough things on the ground, I think we've got enough people on the council now with experience that have already gotten things moving. And gotten things in place, and so I think y'all have the experience to, you know, lay this out pretty quickly, not accidentally spend it in a terrible way. So and even if it does get misspent in small amounts, you gotta try something, you gotta throw it at the wall and find what's going on, so if something fails, don't feel too bad. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moore.
Oh, yeah, I was holding that in reserve to see what y'all were discussing, it's very positive, Brian Medford pretty well spelled it out, thank you for. Looking at the different programs and things that are going to benefit the community in the long run, so thank you.
Mr. Gomez, are there any other comments?
And. Mr. Busing.
Busing. Did you want to speak on this topic? Mr. Busing. Mr. Busing. Okay. And I'll say it one last time, Mr. Busing. All right, no response, so we'll move on. And again, Mr. Mr. Gomez, in addition to the funding that we are getting. One of the slides showed different opportunities in terms of grants that we can also apply to. To also kind of supplement what we we want, I think it's the slide before this one. One more. I hope it is.
Yeah, there's different levels of funding that you can, so.
Yeah, so we can, just so you you know, we can also apply for other grants as well. So that's an option as well, so and that's kind of why we put on there the digital equity. So that from broadband, that is something that we can definitely move forward. To use the funds for this, so this is kind of a blessing to have. to use the funds for this. So this is kind of a blessing to have. If no other comments from the council? None? Okay, we will move on. Thank you for your input, and we look forward to coming up with some processes and best practices for, um, for this funding that we're going to receive. The next item is Consider Adopting a Resolution by the Clarkston Mayor and City Council in Response to the Hate Crimes Against Asian Americans. And so with that, and as well as Councilwoman Carol and Councilwoman Johnson, um, wanted to make sure we address the recent issues that happened in terms of our Asian-American and Pacific Island community, and to let them know in terms of our support, that we are here, and that our city is a welcoming city, and so where there, there is no room for hate in our community, and so we stand by our residents, and we wanted to make sure that it's very clear that we are here, and that we will make sure in terms of Clarkston is a neighboring, welcoming city, we've been since twenty fifteen fourteen. And that from a resolution pers- perspective, we, we are addressing the issues that, uh, with the recent, uh, report that showed, um, since COVID, we've seen three thousand seven hundred and ninety-five incidents of hate crimes against our AAPI community. And so we stand by our community, and we want to make sure that they know that from a city, we support them. And Councilwoman Carol, did you have any other comments?
Uh, I would just like to, you know, add that it has been a really tough time. And this isn't just something that's happened recently, this has been going on, I know for some time, of increased harassment, and I just saw recently a video from New York of a sixty-five-year-old Asian-American woman that was assaulted, um, just outside of a hotel. And, you know, there are some people there in that video that didn't actually assist her, or didn't help her. You know, obviously, we want to do everything we can to make members of that community feel supported and helped. Uh, and I think this resolution is hopefully one small step towards doing that.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for bringing this to our attention and shedding a light on it. It is a problem, and it has been, like you, like Councilwoman Carol said. I just wanted, um, to let you know that I appreciate it, because I want everyone in Clarkston to feel secure and to know that we're all here in this fight together, whatever the fight is, so thank you.
And councilmembers, did you have any other comments? Yes, Councilwoman Hopkins?
Oh, I would just like to thank you for putting it forward as well. Um, I have just become recently educated on how bad the situation is for many, um, uh, Asian-American Pacific Islander people, and I, I mean, the murders were atrocious, but after that, hearing all of the other stories, like the older woman attacked on the street, um, I just want every person in Clarkston to know that, uh, we support you, you belong here, and you are valued members of the community, I don't- regardless, um, we stand with you.
Vice Mayor Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I also agree with all these statements, and, um, I all, would like to, um, mention that, that this hasn't really started now with, uh, the recent unfortunate events. Um, history tells us that, uh, including the Chinese Exclusion Act and, and so many other, uh, uh, act that actually, um, directly discriminated, uh, um, Asian-Americans, um, especially, uh, Chinese-Americans back then, but, um, at different occasions, um, uh, different members of, uh, communities, uh, including, um, African-Americans, and, um, uh, now, um, the, the shed, the light is being shed on Asian-Americans as well. But I think, um, uh, as you clearly said it, we are a welcoming city, um, regardless of where you, we come from, or what color we look like, um, we definitely deserve to feel safe in our homes and also in the public, uh, sphere, so, um, I, I really am glad, uh, we are, um, having this resolution.
Thank you all. Uh, Mr. Gomez, are there any community comments?
Uh, nobody signed up for it.
And at this time, we have, um, the executive session. And so, um, we're also gonna make sure we do something new, we, uh, Councilwoman Perkins and I have been in class. And so, um, we're gonna make sure going forward, we're gonna have minutes for our work sessions. So you'll start seeing minutes for our work sessions going forward. Uh, we, you know, it's amazing thing when you learn something new. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion from a council member to go into executive session. Yes, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu?
I have a motion that, uh, we move to executive session to discuss a legal matter.
Second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we, uh, recess this me, recess the work session and go into executive session. Are you ready for the question? All in favor of recessing the work session and going into executive session to discuss a legal matter, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion pass, uh, community, we will go into executive session, and then once that is done, unless you just want to hang around, we will then close out the work session. Thank you for your- Is there a second? Do we, do we not want to close the work session? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, this second that we, in this work session, all of-
I can't hear anything.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you.
Good night. And welcome aboard, Mark.
Welcome, Mark.